Hi, good morning, everybody. My name is Senator Todd Kaminsky, and you have joined a joint Senate hearing, co-chaired by Senators Kevin Parker and myself on the Climate and Community Investment Act. We have with us Senators Rachel May, Senator Anna Kaplan, Senator Pete Harkam, Senator John Mannion, Senator John Liu, and we're going to be joined by more senators shortly. I'd like to welcome our first panel of providing us with testimony on this very important bill. We have Elizabeth Jan Pierre from Upros, Rachel Patterson from EA, Rawa Gramatian from Push Buffalo, Yua Vosper from WeAct, and we also are expecting testimony from Raya Salter from New York Renews, but we don't have her right now. But each witness in this panel is going to have three minutes, and then each senator can ask questions at that point. I see we've been joined by Senator Omarah. And as more senators join us, we will continue to update that. So we're going to begin with Upros's time, and then we will move on from there in order: Upros, EA, Push, and then WeAct. Please begin. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Elizabeth Jan Pierre, and I'm the Executive Director of Upros, co-chair of the National Climate Justice Alliance, and a steering committee member of New York Renews. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today. In June 2019, after years of grassroots organizing by New York Renews, the New York State Legislature passed the Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act, the CLCPA, the nation's most progressive climate justice legislation to reduce emissions, develop renewable energy, create thousands of well-paying jobs, and center equity. Today, I'm here to share our longtime support for the Climate and Community Investment Act, a crucial step to meeting the state's climate mandates. Founded in 1966, Upros is Brooklyn's oldest Latino community-based organization. It is an intergenerational, multiracial, and women-of-color-led organization working at the intersection of racial justice and climate change through advocacy, community engagement, youth leadership, and cultural artistic expression. Upros is located in Sunset Park, Brooklyn, a frontline environmental justice community of over 130,000 people. In the era of COVID-19 and climate change, Black, Brown, and Indigenous communities have been the most adversely impacted by the public health and economic crisis, and it is these same communities who suffer first and worse from recurrent extreme weather disasters. For generations, our communities have been sacrifice zones and have lived with the legacy of harm caused by just a handful of companies. New York State's largest corporate polluters have spent tens of millions of dollars on campaign and lobbying efforts that allow them to act with impunity. In the interest of racial justice, this system must stop. The Climate and Community Investment Act will create the true accountability and transparency needed to achieve just transition. The CCIA would raise up to $15 billion per year for over the first 10 years to be used to create well-paying, green jobs, invest in frontline communities, and build a renewable economy for New York State. A small number of companies are responsible for the vast majority of pollution emissions, desperately impacting frontline Black, Indigenous, and people-of-color communities. And these corporate polluters must be held accountable for their hands in perpetuating racial injustices and disparities. It is time to finally center equity and governance. The CCIA is the key to putting the frontline communities most impacted by multiple crises at the forefront of the solutions. I'd like to thank you for holding this hearing and for the opportunity to provide this testimony. Gracias.
Thank you very much for coming in under the time limit and for your articulate but fast cadence. That's very impressive. Ms. Patterson?
Hi, I'm Rachel Patterson, and I'm testifying on behalf of environmental advocates in New York. Good morning, Chair Kaminsky and Chair Parker and other honorable members here today. On behalf of the team at EA NY, I'd like to start off by saying thank you for making New York the national leader on addressing climate change and climate justice, and for holding this hearing today on the Climate and Community Investment Act. Two years ago, New York made history by passing the most ambitious climate law in the nation with standards for investing in and benefiting disadvantaged communities. Now, other states and the federal government are using our climate law as the blueprint for making the economy-wide shift to renewable energy in an equitable way. But what we don't have yet is a plan for paying for this transition. And simply put, the CCIA is an investment strategy to achieve the emissions reduction goals established by the CLCPA. While we at EA NY focus on the environmental benefits of policies like the CLCPA, achieving emissions reduction goals is not just about what it will do for the good of our planet. It's also about healthier communities that are more resilient. It's about limiting air pollution so that the children in the South Bronx don't have to keep missing school because of asthma attacks. It's about fighting against the rise in global temperatures so that the ocean doesn't continue to warm and cause more frequent hurricanes like Sandy that destroyed our homes and businesses and put thousands of lives at risk. The pollution that causes climate change is the same pollution that harms our communities and our families and makes us fear for the future that we're leaving for the next generation. And we also know that climate change is impacting New Yorkers right now and that the impacts of flooding, sea level rise, and deadly air pollution are worst for our vulnerable residents, the low-income communities and communities of color like Sunset Park in Brooklyn and the North Park community in Long Beach, and so many other communities across the state. We made a commitment in the CLCPA to invest in these communities, and the plan laid out by the CCIA will allow us to live up to that commitment. By charging polluters for their emissions, we can afford to support families, workers, small businesses, and disadvantaged communities in the shift to renewable energy. The CCIA will also empower disadvantaged communities by generating funding for community-led energy planning. Under-served communities know what changes need to be made to make their neighborhoods more resilient and improve air quality. And the funds from the CCIA will allow community members to have the power to shape their communities like we've seen through the amazing work of organizations like Upros and Push Buffalo, who I have the pleasure of testifying with today. And we can do all of this while creating thousands of good, family-sustaining jobs all across the state. And in the last year, over a million New Yorkers have lost their jobs, so we can't afford to leave this money and these good jobs on the table. Scientists estimate that we have less than a decade to make the right investments and lower emissions, or we won't be able to divert the most severe and irreversible impacts of climate change. Now is the time to invest in our families and our communities and our future by making CCIA the law in New York State. Thank you so much for your time today.
Thank you so much, and I appreciate the Long Beach reference. Really want to welcome Senator Brian Kavanaugh to this hearing, and ask that Ms. Gramatian, please proceed.
Good morning. I would like to begin by thanking all of you for holding this important hearing. My name is Rawa Gramatian, Director at Push Buffalo and a member of the Climate Justice Working Group. In keeping with regional protocol, I would like to start by acknowledging the traditional territory of the Hoodnashonee and by honoring the six nations, the Mohawk, Huyuga, Anandaga, Oneida, Seneca, and Tuscarora. In their land, we are situated. In this acknowledgement, we hope to demonstrate their respect for the treaties that were made on these territories and remorse for the harms and mistakes of the far and recent past. I also acknowledge that this country's economy was built on the free labor by stolen enslaved people from Africa. We at Push Buffalo are committed to Black liberation and Indigenous sovereignty. A little bit about Buffalo, New York. We are the third poorest city, sixth most segregated in the nation. We have the second-oldest housing stock and suffer some of the worst health outcomes, 58th out of the 62 counties in New York State, due to our post-industrial past. While the highly racialized inequities in our community are remarkable, the frontline community on the West Side, where we are practicing a just transition through our Action Place Based Initiative called the Green Development Zone on a 30-square-block area is an example of the CLCPA and the CCIA in action. The mission of Push Buffalo is to mobilize residents to create strong neighborhoods with quality, affordable housing, expand local hiring opportunities, and to advance racial and economic and environmental justice. Push's Green Development Zone combines green, affordable housing construction, community-based renewable energy projects, housing weatherization, green jobs training, green infrastructure, and vacant land restoration projects towards the goal of creating pathways to employment for neighborhood residents while reducing our carbon footprint by gaining control over public and private capital from the triple-line projects that create economic growth, equity, and environmental sustainability. This has been an incremental process over 15 years, built on the foundation of local knowledge, expertise, values, and unwavering commitment to self-determination and community resilience, in which our goal is to show and not tell what is possible when we say a just transition. We are learning with and from frontline communities such as Upros in Brooklyn, The Point in the South Bronx, showing a community-growth machine can help build the foundation for a new community economy. We are grateful to our esteemed elected officials that are showing the courage to do the right thing to ensure justice and equity by responding to the urgency of this moment through bold actions that meet the scale of the climate crisis. Together, we are the answers of our grandparents' prayers and the foundation for the next seven generations. We must make good on the promise of the CLCPA. No more delay. Pass the CCIA. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Vosper?
Good afternoon, Senator Parker and Senator Kaminsky and members of the committee. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today in favor of the Climate and Community Investment Act. I am Yua Vosmer, Environmental Policy and Advocacy Coordinator for WeAct for Environmental Justice. For the past 32 years, WeAct has been actively fighting against environmental racism in northern Manhattan. It is our mission to build healthy communities by ensuring that people of color and/or low-income residents participate meaningfully in the creation of sound and are informed and engaged in decision-making that impacts our community. Often providing a voice to the voiceless, I'm a Fordham Law School graduate who empowers communities to know their rights and actively participate in government. WeAct strongly supports the Climate and Community Investment Act and the act that would enact the Climate and Community Investment Act. The act would create the Climate and Community Investment Authority that would administer multi-billion-dollar programs to invest a just transition to a clean and renewable New York. Residents of low- and/or disadvantaged communities often live in under-resourced areas that also suffer a disproportionate environmental pollution burden. These communities are often the last to receive vital investments that can improve their air quality, living conditions, and quality of life. Compared to other neighborhoods, Harlem, Washington Heights, and Inwood have a higher percentage of poverty, childhood asthma, along with old, under-maintained housing stock containing higher levels of mold, lead, and asbestos. Health research shows lower-income communities are disproportionately burdened with asthma and other respiratory health effects because of poor indoor and outdoor air quality. So without targeted investments in frontline communities, pollution burdens will continue to adversely impact vulnerable neighborhoods. The Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act sets a target for disadvantaged communities to receive 40% of overall benefits from the state's climate programs. Well, the CCIA enables this target to happen by creating a pollution fee that establishes an escalating price on greenhouse gas and a surcharge on human health co-pollutants. In expanding job creation and workforce development in the northern Manhattan community, WeAct has free solar worker training programs. Over the past few years, we have trained more than 100 northern Manhattan residents for careers in the solar industry. This is important for ensuring that who has suffered from climate change can have an opportunity to have good jobs in the emerging green economy. The CCIA at eight adds to our mission requiring responsible contracting, labor, and job standards, along with worker protection. For these reasons, I urge the committee to pass the CCIA that puts disadvantaged and environmental justice communities at the center of policy, ensuring frontline communities that they too matter and are able to equitably participate in all the investments and incentives offered to enhance their quality of life. Thank you for this opportunity to testify.
Thank you so much. And before we get to Ms. Salter, just want to say hello to co-chair Kevin Parker, and I know he wants to make some opening remarks.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the opportunity. Let me just say, first of all, good morning. And let me say, excuse me for my tardiness. This is actually a critical, important issue. We have to really understand that climate change is a real thing, right? And we certainly, in the state legislature, have acknowledged that, particularly with the passing of the Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act that we passed a couple of years ago. And this is now the next logical step. And so, as we talk about CCIA, this is going to be absolutely critical for us to be able to first fund the things that we laid out that we wanted to do in terms of goals in the CLCPA. But then also, it continues to help us push the important issue of environmental justice. It's critical that we not just have a continued conversation about protecting our environment, but we have to have some understanding and articulation around the equity issues around this, that in fact, the people who are bearing the greatest burden around environmental hazards in our great state, you know, are primarily Black and Latino and Asian, primarily women, primarily low and moderate income, and we really need to protect those communities and really do better by them. And so, you know, our conversation today and your testimony, I think, takes us a long way into understanding these issues in a more magnified way and hoping that this helps us both, you know, craft the legislation in a way that we can get it passed, but more importantly, brings us to a place where we protect these communities, protect our planet, protect our great state, and have a place that our children and grandchildren can be proud to grow up in. And so, I want to again thank you all for participating today. Thank you, Todd Kaminsky, for your leadership on this issue, and thank you for, you know, organizing us around this important, this important public hearing. And thank my colleagues for not seeing it robbery to spend the day talking about the climate of our state, talk about how we in fact deal with, you know, carbon, and how we in fact, you know, advance the issues of environmental justice in our great state. So thank you again all so much, and Todd, I throw it back to you.
Thanks, Senator Parker. And now, we're going to take the testimony of the last witness on our panel, Ms. Salter, and then we'll take questions from Senator to the panel members.
All right. Thank you so much. My name is Raya Salter, and I am the policy organizer for New York Renews. Thank you for this opportunity to testify on behalf of the New York Renews Coalition in favor of the Climate and Community Investment Act, or CCIA. New York Renews is a coalition of over 275 member organizations, including environmental justice groups, conservationists, labor, youth, faith communities, and public health advocates, among others. We represent tens of thousands of New Yorkers across the state. First, we want to thank you for the 2019 passage of the Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act, or CLCPA. The CLCPA catapulted New York into national leadership on climate and is both preparing the state for a just, clean energy transformation and inspiring federal action. New York is the only state that has codified a just transition into law, one that centers frontline communities, jobs, and justice, people, and planet. The CCIA is part two. The CCIA generates revenue for just transition by establishing a price on greenhouse gases and a surcharge on co-pollutants. By pricing the source of harm to frontline communities, the pollution that causes asthma, premature death, and escalating climate crises, we can invest up to $15 billion a year into the solutions that we need. The CCIA would invest in large and small-scale renewable energy projects, building upgrades in energy retrofits, and community-owned power. The CCIA will also invest deeply in clean and renewable energy for every school and quality child independent care, all while creating good local jobs and protecting workers impacted by the transition. This is climate justice. It is the only proposal that places a fee on both GHG emissions and co-pollutants, and then puts the power and the funds into the hands of frontline communities to make the change happen. It does so while protecting consumers from increased energy costs. And unlike other carbon pricing proposals, it addresses equal and mean wealth, racial justice, and climate crises we face as a state and show leadership in the nation. New York can build upon the framework for climate action created by the CLCPA and actually create a clean energy economy and a care economy that improves the health and well-being of communities. It is in the interest of the state of New York to provide funding for just transition.
Thanks very much. That was definitely the only panel in the history of legislative hearings to not have one member go above the time limit. So that's much appreciated. I hope everyone follows your lead today. I'm glad you went first. I am going to lead off the questioning for this round. If senators want to ask questions, either put it in the chat or raise your hand, and I will get started now. So can a panelist, just for everyone's benefit, just tell us, if you are a business, a company, an individual, who, how do you know if this impacts you? Who is subject to this law? And in what way, what would the law mean for you if you are somebody that would, quote-unquote, be regulated under the CCIA? Any panel, any member can answer if they'd like.
Well, I guess I will answer that if you are a polluter, polluting in New York, or bringing or at the point-of-sale into the state, or originating in the state, then this fee would apply to you.
Okay. Can you give us an example of a type of business to which it would apply?
Well, it would apply to polluting emission sources, like as, say, sources that have a Title V, you know, EPA air permit, a power plant, et cetera.
Okay. And what would it mean for... Well, first of all, has anyone, I'm sure many of you have looked at what this has meant in the countries that have employed it? And what have you found to be the differences in terms of those policies that you think have led to better or worse results? I know this is tried in many other countries in the world, and I wonder what your impression of that is and what you think that recommends to us?
If I would jump in, we are in a unique position in the United States where we are showing leadership on this type of policy. I think that what our opportunity here is not a cap-and-trade, market-based scheme that has been tried in other places. It is simply placing a fee on pollution to generate revenue for the projects that we need. And this is the innovation, the old-fashioned innovation that we think will work for New York.
And has that been done in Europe or Canada or anywhere?
I believe not in this exact way. And of course, our jurisdiction is unique.
Okay. And do we know, can you tell us what the price per ton is? And where, what you, how you arrived at that number and what that number signifies?
Yeah, we're looking at $55. This is a price that is somewhat aligned with federal projections in terms of the federal cost of carbon. And it, however, is infinitely less than the true cost of carbon and co-pollutants as we know it to be. And yet, it would, this fee would generate up to $15 billion a year to make the investments that we need.
I could just jump in for a moment, too, is that we are really just trying to create the conditions for the transition to happen in a way that is just, that actually heals our communities, repairs the harm that's been done over generations. But more importantly, it is our goal that these polluting fossil fuel industries completely transition to the renewable economy because that is the only way that we can save our planet.
Okay. Before I go to the next, send this over to Senator Parker. Are there any other members of the panel that wish to say anything at this time? Okay, Senator Parker?
Thanks so much, Senator Kaminsky. So I have a couple of questions, too. How much per year do we think that this proposal will generate? And I apologize if I missed that answer earlier.
$15 billion.
Around $15 billion, okay. And what agency would be responsible for the spending of this $15 billion annually?
The Climate and Community Investment Act would create a new authority, the Climate and Community Investment Authority, and they would administer the entire set of programs that are proposed, and they would have, you know, control jointly with the comptroller over the funds.
And so, there is actually, although not in actual terms, in real terms, there's actually a sunset on this, right? Because eventually, what we're really saying is that we want to put this authority out of business at a, you know, over time because at some point, there'll be not enough money being collected. So theoretically, what we would have is, instead of a $15 billion a year fund going perpetually, what we would have is a declining fund, you know, hopefully, year by year because people would get out of the activities that actually would actually create the basis of this fund. Am I right about that? Am I wrong about that?
Correct. You know, when we see the emissions reductions, when we see the emissions disappearing, then we will have dug ourselves out of climate crisis.
And how long are we projecting that we think that that will take?
Well, the state has a goal of 100% net zero by 2050. And that is sort of how the CLCPA and the CCIA work together. We want to obtain the goals within the framework that the law already sets out. Let's see if we can get there.
So we kind of have like stick, so we have stick and carrot, right? Because we create an economic disincentive for polluters to continue their behavior and simultaneously are funding projects that actually create sustainable and clean energy economies in our state.
Well, we really see it is not as much as a carrot, but you know, we do see it as a stick. We are trying to raise the revenue to do what we need to do. But this is distinct and separate from a market-based mechanism that seeks, that thinks that we can scrub the air from all our problems by igniting a market because that's not going to get at the root causes of the climate crisis. We're raising revenue, and we're going to do what we need to do, pursue it to the CLCPA.
We're also, if I can add, creating healthier communities, which is a savings in terms of public health, which will benefit workers and small businesses. There won't be as many disruptions of a child's education as a result of asthma and upper respiratory disease. And so, that is also part of the economic analysis that we rarely talk about because when we think about resources, we think about it in a very narrow way. But it is a cost savings, both for educational institutions, for businesses, for our communities, and literally, we're saving lives. And there is no cost associated with that. That is priceless.
And so, I'm going to wrap up in a second. But what are some of the projects that you see being done with this $15 billion?
I'll just answer that briefly and invite Push to also respond. Our communities have been working on infrastructure projects like climate adaptation, mitigation, and resilience. We've been looking at energy democracy. We've been looking at food sovereignty. We have operationalized a just transition in our communities with offshore, now with offshore wind and with the community-owned solar. So our initiatives are of different scales because that's what a just transition is. It's creating local livable economies of different scale. And so, all of that thinking and all of the identification of different kinds of legislation that make it possible for us to operationalize in our communities has been done and all that planning. Now, what we need is legislation to make it possible for us to invest in our communities, to move us away out of harm's way. So I would invite Rawa, just because, you know, I'm talking about Brooklyn, about Lenape Territory, Sunset Park. And I know that our sisters and brothers upstate New York have been doing the same.
Everything that Elizabeth said, but the opportunity is that each community and a hyper-local is able to implement the strategies that work for them that are the most relevant because we're not a model of the community across the state.
Sorry, Kevin.
No, go ahead. Go ahead, Todd. I'm done.
Okay, thank you. So we're going to go, and Senator Kavanaugh, the answer to your question is all senators can ask questions to the panel members. So we're going to go, Senator May will have three minutes, then Senator Kavanaugh, and if any other senators want to ask questions, just let me know.
Thank you. Thank you, Senator Kaminsky and Senator Parker, for pulling this together and to the great presentations by the panelists. I wanted your impression of what is happening now with the CLCPA and climate justice. Are you satisfied with the way that that implementation is happening around climate justice?
Well, let me just say briefly, you know, the CLCPA is a good start. We saw the 40% as a baseline, that is the goal. And given the unprecedented legacy of environmental racism in our communities and what that's meant for our health, we think that this is the, definitely, the direction to start moving towards. The climate, for us, climate justice really is how it impacts communities of color, frontline communities that have been bearing the brunt of all of the environmental burdens and all the environmental races. of all of the environmental burdens and all the environmental racism. And we're watching the Biden administration, literally our fingerprints are all over that, that justice 40%. And we're telling them that 40% is the baseline. It's not, it's not the ceiling. We would have liked it to have gone further, but notwithstanding, I think that it's a good start. So I, I would just say that.
Great. And do you think the right people are at the table? I guess that's one of the, one of the questions I've had.
I think the problem with the table is when you've got a few people from frontline communities and then you've got the table saturated with people that represent lobbying interests that are proposing false solutions and tech fixes at a time when we are in a crisis. And so those of us who come from the frontline are charged with not only bringing a narrative and bringing solutions, but also having to sort of negotiate the lives of our people at a table when you bring all of these other interests. So it is challenging. I'm not going to lie. I don't know if other people have different perspectives, but from where I sit, both nationally and locally, it is difficult to have to negotiate the lives of our people with people who have endless resources and can, and can really people and staff opposition to a vision whose time has come. So it is challenging and, but we are, but we're there. And, and the coalition is made up of close to 300 members. It is unheard of to see a coalition of this nature at a state level that represents the entire state, where people of different races, ethnicities and class are working together towards the same goal. That has never happened in the state of New York. And that means that there is consensus and there is a will from our communities to create something that is radically different than what we've inherited.
Terrific. Yeah, I just want to make sure we get the right people at the table for the CCIA as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Senator May. Before we get to Senator Kavanaugh, I'm just going to use my chair prerogative to just first welcome Jim Goran, Senator Jim Goran here, but then also just ask a question to Ms. Salter, because you are at the table. You are a Senate appointee to the Climate Action Council and we're lucky to have you there. My question to you is, how do we go about thinking, taking action like this legislatively verse doing it through the Climate Action Council, which could also pass regulations which would enact this or similar measures? How do we go about thinking how we should implement policies like this? So I don't know if you're frozen or on mute, but I, we can't hear you. I guess frozen.
And perhaps repeat the question.
Sorry, you know, one of the questions Senator May asked is, who's at the table for the, for the CLCPA? And is, is it, is it moving in a good direction? So I guess I'm jumping off Senator May's question, saying, you know, you're at the table, you're on, you're on the Climate Action Council, you're a Senate appointee. So when we want to take action like that or consider taking action like that outlined in this bill, how do we think about going forward legislatively or going through the Climate Action Council, which could also pass regulations that get to the same place? In other, in other words, should we, should we let the Climate Action Council figure out a way to go? Or should we legislatively push to be doing this? I just wonder how we should think about those different paradigms.
Well, I, you know, I think that clearly here, the legislature should act and it should act in the direction of the CCIA. And the conversation about the CCIA and it should also happen at the Climate Action Council. I would suggest a concurrent strategy.
Okay, thank you. We're going to go down to Senator Kavanaugh, followed by Senator O'Meara.
Thank you very much. And thank, I, you know, thank you to the chairs for convening this hearing. Senator Kaminsky and Senator Parker, I had an opportunity to speak about the very strong desire to do a hearing like this a while back. So I'm glad, you know, budget's done and we're finally getting to it. Just can, a couple of terms were sort of, sort of rat, we went through quickly and there are several of you who are experts on this. But just for the, for the benefit of members of the panel and for the, you know, people at home who might be watching this or viewing it on audio, video later, can you just talk about that, this approach of attacks on greenhouse gas emissions and co-pollutants relative to other mechanisms that are out there? And Senator Kaminsky asked a little bit about this, but we have, you know, we have the, the Regional Greenhouse Gas Initiative, which is a limited initiative, you know, just in with one particular source of pollutants, but has been around for a very long time. It's arguably the first such initiative in the country and it cuts across 10 states. We have other approaches, you know, like in British Columbia and Canada, kind of carbon tax. Can you talk about the, the benefit of this approach relative to kind of those other mechanisms that people, that, that people have tried out there?
Sure, I'm happy to take a stab at this one. So as other folks have alluded to in their testimony, we already have an emissions reduction standard in place. That's the Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act. And frankly, that, and that does not just charge carbon, or that does not just charge us to reduce carbon emissions. It charges us to reduce all greenhouse gas emissions as well as co-pollutants. And those are really the major distinctions. Other territories, nations, states that have market based policies where you tax an emission, the goal is for, of those policies is to use that tax opportunity to decrease the level of emissions and spur, you know, innovation, et cetera. We already have the mandate to reduce the emissions and the CCIA would just really be a source of collecting those funds. As you say, the other major difference there is the co-pollution component. Other places that have, you know, emissions based taxes do not have this co-pollutant piece. Co-pollutants are not necessarily greenhouse gas emissions, that they're what's emitted along with greenhouse gas emissions. And they really contribute to the worst health impacts that our disadvantaged communities, you know, have to endure. And so charging those is distinct and separate and is, is actually an additional fee in the CCIA and will specifically create money to fund these community driven projects that Elizabeth and Rola have talked about. So those are, those are the major differences. This is just an investment vehicle and an investment opportunity for the state, rather than an opportunity to drive down emissions themselves. We're already doing that to, in New York.
Right. That's very helpful. And I think, I think that, you know, during the course of this hearing, I think we're going to want to talk a little bit more about the co-pollutants, because you know, this is, you know, the headline of this is climate. But I think it does also direct a lot of immediate needs in our communities. But three minutes goes fast, so my time's up, but I can only just take the opportunity to thank the panel as well for all of your insightful comments. Senator O'Meara?
Yes, thanks, Chairman. Just quick follow up on Senator Kavanaugh's question on the, the greenhouse gas emissions and the fees. Is, is the CCIA again taxing greenhouse gas, gas emissions in addition to the other pollutants? You know, similar to the way that Reggie is taxing greenhouse gas emissions? Is this yet another tax on greenhouse gas emissions or is this other emissions?
I'll just say briefly that Reggie is a cap and trade model and, and this is not, CCIA is not. And I'd invite Raya and others to elaborate a little bit more and Rachel. This is different. And even the piece on co-pollutants is different, because that's the justice piece right there. If we only focused on, on greenhouse gases, then we would have a climate plan and it wouldn't address the injustice of legacy of extraction and how it's impacted the health of, the health of our community. The other thing that it's really important is that we can't talk about this without talking about the impact of COVID and how COVID desperately affected people of African and indigenous ancestry as a result of the history of exposure to all of the toxins and toxicants in our community. But this is not a cap and trade scheme. This is different. And so, so it includes addressing co-pollutants and addressing greenhouse gases. And, you know, I invite my sisters on the panel to elaborate a little bit more if there's a need for more information.
I'm going to need to move on. Thank you for that. It was running short on time. So I apologize for cutting the others off perhaps, but on the fees, can you describe how the fees are going to be calculated and what the impact is going to be on the rate payer at their home? Say the average single family home throughout New York State. What is the financial impact going to be on their utility bill?
Well, I, I'll go ahead and jump in. So first of all, it's really important to note that the bill plans to mitigate negative bill, bill impacts on residents, especially low to moderate to middle class residents. So it calls for several things and several protections, including a public service commission proceeding to identify impacts and mitigate them. And it provides significant funds for rebates. Also provides for a very methodical way for both the co-pollutant piece and for the GHG emissions in terms of deep work by the DEC, by the new authority to create an index for co-pollutants, to understand how to price them. And similarly for greenhouse gas emissions and to evaluate what those impacts are indeed. And with the G, which, with the carbon prices in particular, it, it sets, the, the price starts at 55 and then it escalates based on an index that actually, that math, an equation that helps us understand how well the, the state is doing on its emissions reductions. So it does, it will escalate based on have, we will have success and we'll put ourselves out of business.
Senator O'Meara, you have any, you have one follow up before we conclude?
Yeah, so I didn't hear anything in there on what this is going to cost the middle class, single family taxpayer, single family home rate payer. What is the cutoff of who gets the rebate? How is that factored? What level of income?
The, we are looking to at giving rebates, qualifying folks will be up to 60% of folks. And what that will mean with specifics in terms of income, you know, will, is to be determined through the process. But we're looking at making sure that the majority of folks are, are made whole.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so very much to this panel. Thank you for all the information and insight you've provided and really appreciate you being here today. We're going to move on to panel number two, please. I would like to welcome to our second panel, Ken Pakowski from the Business Council, John Barto from the Empire State Forest Products Association, Kate Ogden from Seventh Generation and Elizabeth Fairchild from Business Forward. We, all witnesses will have three minutes to give testimony and then the senators will have about the same to ask you questions when your testimony is over. Really appreciate everyone being here today to provide your important perspectives. And we're going to start with Mr. Pakowski and go on to John Barto after that.
Great, thanks. Good morning, Senator, and appreciate the time. Today, we're trying to go really quickly here. May wanted to make a couple of points. First, I think the threshold question was talked a little bit about in the first panel, is the timing in our view, and I think others will speak to this. This bill seems to replicate or perhaps even replace some of the work currently being done under the Climate Action Council and its various work groups and advisory committees on just transition, climate justice policies, mission reduction and transportation, et cetera. So it just makes us that moving forward with this bill is, is premature. We're party to the, to the CAC and its work groups, enormous amount of work being done there. And it's addressing some of the very issues that this bill, in our view, would, would, you know, presuppose the answers to. So we encourage legislature allowing the CLCPA process go forward. Second topic we want to talk about is cost. And I think this bill illustrates that the direct cost of the state's carbon reduction renewable energy goals will not be cheap and they won't be borne just by power generators and, and industry. And I know there are some rebates in the bill for low and moderate income individuals and, and small businesses, but others will bear the, the, the cost. Is the, the assessments in for, for, for fossil fuels is, is not on emissions, but it's on the fuel itself. So those costs will be filled out through the economy. It'll be recognized in the cost of goods and products and activities. It'll, to the extent that it impacts business costs and profits, it'll be reflected in prices paid for labor, i.e. wages and job opportunities. We do think that this will have a significant cost. I heard the $15 billion number thrown out a number of times. That, that's a big number. Our, what, what, in our analysis that the, the tax on natural gas alone would be about $4.2 billion, about 26% increase in the cost. Cost to gasoline would be 2.3 billion, about 55 cents per gallon. For those who are, aren't getting rebates, that, those are, are significant costs that would be, they have to be absorbed. But last, the other thing I want to talk about is the bill seems to be structured to really limit business engagement in, in the analysis and the development of responses, including industries that will be directly and adversely affected by the bill. While we're encouraged by the provisions of the bill that talk about promoting manufacturing growth and in-state, in-state supply chains for, for clean energy production, we really question whether this bill's mechanisms are going to be that much more successful than the existing state economic development, job creation mechanisms we have. New York State, you know, has some significant headwinds facing its manufacturing sector. A lot of those are self-imposed in environmental policy, labor policy and others. We think this bill will have an adverse impact on the economy. This bill recognizes it and we, we question whether its mechanisms will be enough to offset it. We think that's an area where this program needs more business input. And in, in the number of provisions of the bill, it seems to, to write us out. Happy to, to take any questions afterwards. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barto. You're on mute.
So I appreciate the opportunity to speak today and thank you for holding this important hearing. We've got six broad areas of legislation I'd like to comment on. The first being, this legislation is huge, just not in a number of pages, but in the breadth and depth which it engineers and economic and social mechanisms it addresses. It distances, if not displaces, the market mechanisms of the private sector in responding to climate change. We need to get to a point where climate policy and markets and capital are working towards common solutions, not at odds. We think the legislation is premature, as it has not benefited from the integrated analysis called for in the Climate Leadership Community Protection Act. The integrated analysis should be completed prior to legislative or other design financing mechanisms are created. Legislation places fees on Title V emissions more than just climate or greenhouse gas, as well as CO2 emissions. The imposition of these fees at a time couldn't be worse for our manufacturing. We calculated a $55 ton fee on one of our mills would cost them over $32.6 million a year. Sector wide, that would be closer to a billion across our forest related economy. This is not sustainable to many of our businesses. The fee in this legislation fails to acknowledge the difference between biogenic and geologic, logic carbon sources. The legislation does not sufficiently deal with directing revenues generated to projects benefiting those directly impacted. While we certainly understand the targets for disadvantaged communities, leading, business leading its way out of its current circumstances need to be supported in addressing what the CLCPA is calling on them to do. This legislation could create a competitive disadvantage to New York's existing manufacturing, leading to leakage, discouraging manufacturing investment in New York and increasing costs that would only be assigned to consumers of products that we produce and would jeopardize the, the role that our forests and forest related products have in addressing climate change. We've been working diligently with the Ag and Forestry Panel of the CAC to put together a role for forest and wood products. And I'd like to outline a few things that we're hoping focus on. First, we need to retain and expand the existing manufacturing and supply chains in our forested based economy today to ensure that we have supply chains in the future. Second, we need to invest in applied research and technology innovation that will unleash the bioeconomy in the future. Third, we need to accept that what we currently make using fossil fuels, we can make from biomass. Diesel to biodiesel, plastics to bioplastics, petrochemicals to biochemicals. Fourth, we need to decide whether we want to host and grow these advanced bioprocessing facilities and manufacturing plants in our communities and have the jobs, the tax base and the wealth that comes with them. Finally, we need to create a welcoming environment for private sector capital that will be required to advance this bio based economy. Capital goes where capital is welcome. In conclusion, ESFPA, the Empire State Forest Products Association, supports our efforts to address carbon emissions and in turn cause, that in turn cause climate change in a way that maximizes the mitigation provided by forest and wood products they produce. As an association comprised of forest landowners, practitioners and wood product manufacturers, we're committed to addressing impacts of global warming in a manner that is economically beneficial and offering viable forest related solutions. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. Ms. Ogden?
Uh, thank you so much. Ms. Ogden?
Thank you. Hi, my name is Kate Ogden. I'm the advocacy manager at Seventh Generation. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. Uh, for thirty years, Seventh Generation has taken great care in the business choices we make to protect people and the planet for this and future generations. As a company with the future in our view, we know that the climate crisis is one of the greatest challenges of our time. We also know that the most marginalized and vulnerable populations around the world and in New York State are being hit first and hardest by the impacts of the climate crisis. Ultimately, however, the climate crisis and the instability it brings threatens everyone, including the business community. As a leading sustainable business, we have seen firsthand the impacts of the climate crisis. In twenty twelve, Hurricane Sandy was responsible for the tragic loss of hundreds of lives, as well as countless homes and communities. Damaged coastal infrastructure and transportation systems ground Seventh Generation's operations to a halt for over a week, causing a significant loss to our business and contributing to an estimated sixty-five billion dollar cost to the US economy. As we continue to grapple with the devastating health and economic impacts of COVID nineteen, the need for a massive and equitable investment in our communities and our economy could not be clearer. You cannot live a healthy life on a sick planet, and you cannot have a healthy business on a sick planet. Unchecked, the climate crisis and the economic and social inequities that both exacerbate and are exacerbated by the climate crisis will continue to have a devastating impact on our economy, our health, and our communities. At Seventh Generation, we have committed to accounting for and addressing our own impact on the climate. In twenty eighteen, we set science-based targets to bring our business operations in line with an emissions reduction path to keep the planet under one point five degrees average global temperature rise. The actions we can take as a business, however, are not enough when we account for the full life cycle of our products. Over ninety percent of our emissions footprint comes from consumers using our products in their homes to wash and dry their clothes and dishes. We cannot change this on our own. Seventh Generation is committed to advocating for systemic solutions to the climate crisis like the Climate and Community Investment Act, because to live into our values as a sustainable business, committed to a future where everyone can thrive, we need the your leadership. We celebrate the work of the many individuals and organizations across the state who are advocating for a healthier, more sustainable, more equitable New York. New York is and can continue to be a proof point, demonstrating the leadership and vision that's needed here and at the federal level to mitigate the worst impacts of the climate crisis and set a path to a more just and equitable future. The CCIA will help to build new systems that will support the health, sustainability, and equity of our communities. It will transform the way that New York powers its economy while ensuring a just transition for the communities most vulnerable to the climate crisis. On behalf of Seventh Generation, I'd like to ask that all members of the New York State Senate and Assembly champion the CCIA. Thank you so much for your time.
Thanks, Ms. Ogden, and now to Ms. Liz Fairchild from Business Forward.
Thank you. Good morning. Um, I'm Liz Fairchild. I'm the executive director of Business Forward, and we work with more than a hundred thousand business leaders, small business leaders across the country, and about twelve thousand of those are here in New York. So we've we've organized hundreds of briefings on clean energy, climate change, energy security, with two secretaries of energy, EPA administrators, member of Congress, hundreds of other officials. And today is a natural extension of our small business leaders' work on the CLCPA, where more than a thousand of them signed a statement of support, and they represented fifty of the sixty-four counties in New York. Seven out of ten of them lived outside of New York City itself. So today, I'm here to voice strong support of the CCIA on behalf of those local business leaders here in New York. And they support the CCIA because their businesses depend on a stable, sustainable, and thriving economy. And they're concerned about severe weather, distorting commodity prices, disrupting their supply chains, like Kate just said, damaging plants and equipment, hurting consumer demand. So we asked them a science, a statement of support in the CCIA. It's attached to my testimony today. And I'll just summarize the four primary reasons for their support. So first, the CCIA would keep money in New York. Local businesses, their residents, and governments spend about sixty billion dollars annually on energy, and they consume roughly four times more energy than is produced in the state itself. That means that about two-thirds of those funds are spent importing fossil fuels into New York. And that forty billion dollars could be spent, is is spent supporting other states' businesses, their infrastructure, their schools, and their jobs. By imposing the fee proposed today and switching to solar and wind production at home, those energy dollars could drive investments in the local economy instead. Second, everyone across the state benefits from the CCIA. It would raise about fifteen billion per year, like we've been saying today, enabling critical investments in energy efficiency, infrastructure, community-based organizations that are working to ensure more more households benefit from the energy transition. And third, it creates jobs for New Yorkers. So in its first ten years, the CCIA would create more than a hundred and fifty thousand jobs with fair wages, high labor standards, and long-term job security. It would also provide direct assistance for the families that need it most, including low-income households and fossil fuel workers. The fourth reason is that they've supported CLCPA in the past. They support the CCIA because it builds on that climate leadership that New York has has shown. The CLCPA established New York's a national leader. But to capitalize on that progress, lawmakers need to include the CCIA in this year's budget, which would raise the necessary funds to invest in local renewable energy projects like New York's growing solar industry. Without the funding, New York will just keep sending money and good jobs elsewhere. So ultimately, the local business leaders with whom we work in New York, they see the CCIA as an opportunity to transform the way we power New York's economy while mitigating the severe weather risks and spurring long-lasting economic growth. So thank you for your time today.
Uh, thank you very much. If any senators have questions for these panelists, please raise your hand, and I'll be happy to call on you. I'll take an opening question to Mr. Pakowski and just ask if you could restate the numbers you have on how this bill would impact gasoline prices and how you derived derived those numbers.
Well, sure, and I'd be happy to share them with you. We did, we looked at US EIA data on fuel usage in the state. We use their, you know, carbon emission equivalents by by uh, by fuel type. Uh, we looked at the the fees proposed in the bill, and then it becomes a math equation. So based on what we, what we, the data we pulled for recent years, natural gas usage, uh, our data said forty-two billion dollars, I'm sorry, four point two billion dollar assessment on natural gas use was about twenty-six percent of, that would be about twenty-six percent on residential gas prices. And then get to do that on industrial prices. And then for gasoline, our calculation was two point three billion, which would be about fifty-five cents per gallon. Um, the one thing that I I didn't get a chance to speak to is our concern on the Title V fees. Um, the bill is drafted, as we understand it, puts no limit on what those fees would be. Uh, and the bill says the fee will be set annually by regulation based on whatever amount the legislature appropriates for certain categories of spending. I mean, the existing Title V fees range from sixty to ninety dollars a ton based on your overall emissions. They raise about ten million dollars. As we read this bill, this second fee is on top of those that existing fee structure. And I think it's interesting, important to note that just over the last ten years, total emissions from Title V facilities have fallen about seventy-five percent over the last twenty years by uh, by eighty percent. We think imposing an additional fee on on Title V sources, which is not just power producers, industry, there's there's hospitals, they have Title V permits, there's universities, there's a limited number of major housing units. We don't think that that produces any any value to the state. These are sources that are already highly regulated, including, you know, HAP sources that are subject to, you know, maximum material control technology standards. Uh, we think it's it's that's going to particularly adverse impact on the state. Uh, and the last thing, I know it's a long answer, but the other thing we want to say on the fees. Yeah, I mean, under the CLCPA, the idea of a carbon, industry-wide carbon fee is still an open issue. That's one of the major issues we think that's being looked at. And if there is to be, you know, carbon tax in the state, uh, you know, we would, we would say it it needs to be broad-based as it is uh, proposed in uh, in the, in this, in this bill, it would apply to all carbon fuels. Um, it's across the board. We think that would, you know, allow a carbon fee to be, you know, and to have a significant revenue, the least amount of economic damage. Uh, but we do think that the the fee structure in this bill strikes us as is too high.
Okay, Mr. Barto, can you explain how you arrived at your calculation of what the, under the bill's regulations would would cost one of your producers?
Yes, we took one of our manufacturing facilities and ran their Title V emissions permits for both biogenic and geologic carbon sources as well as other covered materials under Title V and ran them using the figure of fifty-five dollars per ton, which is what I think Rhea had mentioned that the act was looking at. That's consistent with the federal value of carbon at the current price today. Um, so we ran those numbers, and it came out at this one facility employing six hundred employees to cost eighty-five million, or I'm sorry, thirty-six point six million a year.
What does the facility do?
Uh, they're a paper manufacturer.
Like a paper mill?
Yes.
Okay.
They asked me not to disclose which one because it's a proprietary level of data, but I can share that with you.
That's okay, just curious. Uh, want to welcome Senator Hoileman to the hearing. Thank you very much for joining. Uh, do any senators have any questions for these panelists? Senator Kavanaugh?
Thank you, Senator Kaminsky, and thanks to the panelists. Um, uh, I think it was Mr. Pakowski who said that, you know, the goal needs to be to align uh, government regulation and and private enterprise toward the goal of uh, addressing climate change. Can you just, I mean, I understand that the testimony of several of you, a couple of you to say that this this bill goes too far, the fees are too high. Uh, that, you know, they're too much of an imposition on business. Um, can you talk about how we, how we should figure out what a reasonable level, assuming you favor continuations of you know, some of the existing permit fees that that exist, that are, you know, already charging fees for polluters? And how how should we go about setting a reasonable standard for setting the fees if you think the fees in this bill are too high?
No, I think that quote was actually John's, but I'll answer first.
Oh, forgive me. Okay.
I wish it was mine.
It was very eloquent.
Yeah, I mean, and this is, this is part of the, one of the major parts of the CLCPA that we're involved with. And that's the Energy Intense Trade Exposed Industry Work Group that's trying to assess just that. I mean, we recognize that there's going to be, there's going to be funding necessary to meet the CLCPA goals, no doubt about that. One of the the challenges, because a state acting alone in a national economy, in a world economy, um, these, these are, these effects are going to be pronounced in New York State, and we do think there'll be, uh, you know, leakage of 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 production and therefore emissions. Uh, and both bills recognize that. We're working through the process of talking to individual companies, talking about what their current thermal usage is, what the direct cost would be of converting that from natural gas to electricity under current prices, what technology changes they had to make at their facilities, even if there's tech, uh, existing technology available to allow them to convert from from natural gas to electric power for for certain heat sources. And trying to get an assessment of what, who's being affected, how much, what the state might be able to do to mitigate those impacts. Those activities are already underway under the CLCPA process. I don't know the answers to it, but those are being being looked at very seriously right now.
But from our, from our perspective, I mean, so all, each of the elements you just mentioned are ways of mitigating the effect on business. And, you know, recognizing New York, New York, you know, we've got twenty million people here. Uh, it's a, it's a big world, and obviously they're going to be, you know, if we take, we've already gone down the road taking what we think are some of the most aggressive steps in the world, uh, because we think that, you know, we have to lead on this. But just, you, you're talking about all the mitigating the effects on business, mitigating effects on the bottom line, which, you know, is your job and the job of these businesses. From our perspective, I mean, how do we, should should not part of our goal be to set prices that will push uh, the private sector to do things that they wouldn't otherwise do?
And I think some of that, a large amount of that had been already underway even before CLCPA. I mean, natural gas has had produced significant reductions in power plant emissions, not just in New York State, but other states that have been previously, you know, heavily dependent on coal. In most states, that wasn't done because of government regulation that was done by economics. Uh, we've seen, you know, significant, there's technology already pushing emission reductions in, you know, a lot of categories of emissions regulated by nineteen ninety Clean Clean Air Act. So there are all kinds of forces already in place forcing down emissions. I think the 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 challenge and the risk for a state to try to pick a number to impose costs on either businesses or individuals, you know, to force a certain behavior is you may encourage something uh, positive for the state, or you may just discourage that activity in the state altogether. Uh, and I I'm not, I don't possess to be smart enough to to be able to, you know, identify where that line is. But we, we know, we have forty years of 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 experience in the state, knowing that whatever the state is doing has not been a particularly attractive state for manufacturing investment. So we think there is, there is a, there's a, perhaps a fine line to be determined and applied. Uh, you know, one side, you can incentivize positive activities. On the other side, uh, you're going to have negative consequences. I'm not sure the state will be able to overcome them or offset them.
I see my, the clock has run out just, but just, if I may, just with the chair's indulgence for a minute, just, first of all, just to note that, you know, the life cycle, the story on the life cycle pollution of natural gas has been, is more complicated than just the emissions. I mean, we, I think we've had a growing awareness that, you know, the the amount of methane that's admitted along the way is very, you know, makes get natural gas not quite the, uh, you know, the beneficial substitution that we thought it had been. Um, and, you know, just to say, with respect to forty years of New York, maybe taking some steps that have made it challenging for business. Um, we've also had decades of experience now of, you know, the private sector not uh, stepping up and addressing this without aggressive action. And that's just not, that's not just true in New York. It's true everywhere in the world. There is, there's virtually no jurisdiction where you know, business or the society as a whole is doing enough to address, you know, the fact that we're systematically uh, damaging the ability of our planet to sustain life as we know it. So, you know, with that, I'll leave it there, but uh, but again, I do respectfully, because I do appreciate, uh, you know, all of you coming here to testify today.
And I don't disagree that. We recognize there is a role for advanced state and federal regulations. We're part of those processes, and that's, that's happening. I think it's really a matter of, you know, how far, you know, what what's the right level? And at what point is there, you know, perhaps diminishing returns to the state?
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Just since it was my quote that you focused on, if I were to just quickly say, I think what we called for was the integrated analysis to get completed, that we could really look at what are the real costs and efforts that we need to finance? And then what are the benefits of achieving that? And then how do we then identify the equitable mechanisms? Um, Title V, Title V pollution permits hit manufacturing particularly hard. And if our goal is to drive that manufacturing, make it a competitive disadvantage, that's going to really hurt us. Um, so we're looking to try to say, what is it we need to do? What are the equitable mechanisms? We certainly know that business is going to be responsible for a significant chunk of pain going forward here. They're going to be it in compliance. They're also going to be it in in helping other sectors get along. But how do we do that in a way that doesn't drive it away from New York and to keep it here? And then where do we find the opportunities to grow? That's why I talk so much about the bioeconomy. We have a chance to grow a significant economy here uh, that could really add to just overall economic performance and revenue generation in New York.
Senator, can I, can I ask just one more quick question of Senator, of Mr. Barto? Yeah, sorry, just on Title V permits, you think, is the federal government setting that, do you think that that is the right price for those permits at this point?
Well, I mean, the federal government has a fee of fifty dollars per ton on the permit as it is, and I think that's essentially raising, maybe raising money there. Uh, the fifty-five dollars that the federal government is, is their cost of carbon figure that they've had? And you're already hearing the Biden administration looking at New York, saying that that cost of carbon likely is closer to a hundred, a hundred and twenty-five dollars a ton. Um, that would be crushing on many of our businesses. And that, that was the point we were making, that it's also biogenic carbon. We're driving our carbon not from fossil fuels in large measure, but from biologically produced wood residuals and whatnot.
Right.
So let them treat it differently.
Okay, again, just, and just, I think it is going to be an ongoing subject today, but the question of the difference between the actual cost of this, of this activity and how much we're extracting in in these fees, I think it's, you know, it's the question of the moment. But again, thank you all for your thoughtful touch, and also for those who um, from a business perspective, came in favor of this. I, I thought I'd focus on the opposite point of view during this panel, because we're going to hear, you know, I think we're going to hear a bunch of people in favor today, but thank you.
Thanks so much, Senator Kavanaugh. Senator May, you're up.
That's okay. Senator Kavanaugh asked some of my questions. Um, I'll, I'll pass. Thanks.
Great. Are there any final questions for this panel? Okay, I do not see any. If I'm wrong, please speak up now. Okay, I want to thank these panelists. Okay, I want to thank these panelists for their time and for their focus on this important issue for being here today. Really appreciate it. And now we're going to move on to panel three.
Thank you.
Thanks.
For panel three, we have Maritza Silva-Farrell from Align, Ryan Madden from the Long Island Progressive Coalition, Rachel Spector from Earth Justice, and Anel Hernandez from New York City Environmental Justice Alliance. We are going to start with Ms. Silva-Farrell from Align. You have three minutes for your testimony. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Kaminsky and Senator Parker, for this opportunity to testify today in, in favor of the Climate and Community Investment Act. My name is Maritza Silva-Farrell. I am the Executive Director of Align, the Alliance for Agri in New York. Align is a longstanding alliance of community labor and environmental justice organizations dedicated to creating good jobs, vibrant communities, and an accountable democracy for all New Yorkers. We are also one of the founding members of the New Yorker News Coalition. In twenty nineteen, the New York became a national climate leader by passing the Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act, which has already had a huge impact in the way we see the federal government taking action on climate. However, there is more work to be done. In the past year, we've seen the climate crisis continue and evade it while dealing with a devastating global pandemic and recession, which has hit frontline Black and Brown communities first and worst. Our state needs an economic and climate just transition to a renewable energy economy. And we need new revenue to put people back to work, build out renewable infrastructure, and invest in communities hit hardest by these interlocking crises. Economic recovery in the age of COVID nineteen and climate change means that we cannot afford to address these crises in silos. Furthermore, we cannot ignore the fact that corporate polluters have extracted obscene wealth from our communities while leaving many families to clean up the mess and suffer the devastating health consequences of their pollution. Through the years, they have loaded the real cost of their actions onto workers and communities, billions and billions of dollars per year in worker health and safety issues, poor health outcomes, early deaths, and climate disasters. It's time for them to pay up. The Climate and Community Investment Act is the solution to the multi-issue recovery we need in New York State. The CCIA will put a fee on pollution and raise, as folks have said, fifteen billion per year. The money will be used to transition our economy to hundred percent renewable energy, invest in communities most impacted by pollution and climate change, and create over hundred and fifty thousand good career jobs over the next ten years. CCIA includes goal standards, labor provisions, including project labor agreements, prevailing wages, and apprenticeship training requirements. Additionally, we know that thirteen thousand New Yorkers are affiliated with the fossil fuel industry, and we must make sure no worker or communities are left behind. Therefore, we have the Worker and Community Assurance Fund, which will provide guaranteed economic support to displaced workers and support to retrain and re-equip workers to prevent layoffs. This includes income support, pension support, and funds for early retirement. The transformative power of CCIA comes not from charging polluters, but from investing billions of dollars into real and just climate solutions. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We'll now hear from Ryan Madden.
Good morning, everyone, and thank you to all senators and elected officials on this call. My name is Ryan Madden. I'm the Sustainability Organizer with the Long Island Progressive Coalition and a leading member of New Yorker News, the coalition responsible for the Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act in partnership with your offices here. We are just one group of many in New York State already leading the transition to a one hundred percent renewable energy economy. We actually began a solar campaign, Power Up Solar Long Island, which is designed to reduce the cost of solar for nonprofits and houses of worship, and now affordable housing developments. With the need for society to transition to renewables and the immediate economic impacts from COVID, it's imperative that these institutions benefit from solar. Of note is our current work to explore solar with Channel Park Homes in Long Beach, which is the focus of a study by Erase Racism, which demonstrated the inequitable recovery efforts this community faced in the aftermath of Superstorm Sandy. Increased funding through New York State could expand the reach and impact of this grassroots initiative, which is undertaking work that would largely not happen otherwise, as these institutions are not prioritized by traditional developers. So it is with this background we stand in support of the Climate and Community Investment Act, which will provide the dedicated revenue necessary to meet the goals of CLCPA. This is the year to pass CCIA. The need for massive investment in frontline communities and in creating hundreds of thousands of good green jobs has never been more clear in the aftermath of COVID and the ongoing impacts of climate change. New Yorker News helped write this bill through years of dialogue with stakeholders across New York State, including environmental justice organizations, labor unions, policy experts, business groups, scientists, economists, student groups, and grassroots organizers. It is detailed and carefully planned policy supported by over two hundred eighty organizations across the state, representing hundreds of thousands of New Yorkers. On Long Island, fifty five additional groups representing tens of thousands of Long Islanders have come together to call for the CCIA in a grassroots COVID recovery plan called Reimagine Long Island. It is signed by major community organizations, reproductive healthcare providers, indigenous nations and societies, and faith-based organizations. We are hungry for this policy and ready to benefit from it. And just a snapshot of what CCIA funding could be put towards is expanding Power Up Solar Long Island, resourcing cooperative ownership for solar, among other priorities in the recently released Long Island Solar Roadmap, and supporting the housing and energy priorities of the Shinnecock Nation, who are exploring retrofits for their building stock, community solar for all their members, and battery storage for resiliency due to increasing storms off their coast. Long Island is on the front line of climate change. Our region demands a just transition off of fossil fuels. We began that with CLCPA. Now it's time to fund our mandates with CCIA. It's time to make polluters pay and invest in communities most harmed by the climate crisis. This bill is ready to pass, and we are ready to ensure its successful implementation. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ryan, and thanks for the second Long Beach shout out of the day. I'm feeling the hometown love. Ryan can be found in the LIPC offices in Massapequa or frequently in front of my district office, also yelling about the CCIA. We'll now hear from Rachel Spector from Earth Justice, please.
Hi, everyone. Good morning, and thank you for the opportunity to testify in support of the Climate and Community Investment Act. My name is Rachel Spector, and I'm a staff attorney in the Northeast Regional Office of Earth Justice, a national public interest environmental law office. We need the CCIA because it invests in New Yorkers' needs for clean air, good jobs, affordable energy, local renewable generation, and climate resilience. Equitable, non-regressive revenue streams and meaningful investments in frontline communities are not a given, even as we implement the CLCPA. At Earth Justice right now, we're representing multiple communities fighting a huge concerted effort by fossil fuel companies to extend their polluting business model as long as possible, while continuing to reap huge profits. At the same time, we see non-fossil fuel companies scrambling for subsidies, even when their products don't give us a pathway to zero emissions and may even pose harm to frontline communities. And we see the state considering sector-based revenue generating policies, like the NISO's Carbon Adder or the Low Carbon Fuel Standard, that lack meaningful measures to counteract potential regressive impacts. And in some cases, like the Low Carbon Fuel Standard, lack significant accountability over the use of the funds. So there's four main reasons we believe CCIA is so critical for New York. First, it is about investment. The CCIA raises money not in the hope that the market will shift, but in order to invest between ten to fifteen billion a year over the next decade in the retrofits and infrastructure we need to support a renewable energy economy. It raises funds directly from polluters, mostly out-of-state companies importing fuels at the most upstream point. Second, it protects and invests in the most vulnerable New Yorkers. The CCIA provides crucial rebates to ensure energy affordability for low and moderate income New Yorkers and supports small businesses in the transition. It also provides comprehensive support for workers displaced from the fossil fuel industry and targets newly created jobs to local hires and those who have been excluded from the job market. And I just want to emphasize that large companies can avoid huge cost impacts under CCIA by reducing their reliance on fossil fuels and that this is possible for many industries. Third, CCIA prioritizes public health by putting a price on co-pollutants that cause respiratory and other illnesses. This has important benefits for public health, for racial equity, and the public health impacts of air pollution are incredibly costly for New York State. And it allows frontline communities to assess their own needs and invest locally. Communities know best what their own needs are, and CCIA will allow them to sign renewable energy efficiency and resiliency investments in their neighborhoods. At this critical moment for New York, enacting CCIA is a path to a sustainable economic recovery and an equitable renewable energy economy. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hernandez.
Hello, everyone. Good morning, Senator Parker, Senator Kaminsky, and members of the New York State Senate. My name is Anel Hernandez, and I am the Associate Director with the New York City Environmental Justice Alliance. And I'm here today to support the passage of the New York State Climate and Community Investment Act. Mija is a nonprofit citywide membership network linking grassroots organizations from low-income neighborhoods and communities of color in their struggle for environmental justice. Our alliance is a key advocate of strong and equitable renewable energy targets, because many of the communities we represent are overburdened by the clustering of power plants and other polluting infrastructure in their neighborhoods. In two thousand nineteen, the New York City Panel on Climate Change issued its latest report, projecting that sea level rise, tidal patterns, flooding, and storm surge will increasingly threaten New York City's coastlines. Globally and locally, we continue to experience record-breaking years in terms of extreme heat, with twenty twenty being the hottest year on record according to NOAA. Furthermore, community-led air monitoring efforts also demonstrate the continued air quality and pollution burdens faced by environmental justice communities. These are communities where climate vulnerabilities intersect with historic patterns of environmental burdens that disproportionately affect the ability of low-income communities of color to thrive. New York State will require a rapid system transition in our energy grid, our urban infrastructure, our transportation systems, our solid waste systems, and other industrial systems. And truly, an unwavering commitment from New York State government to make it happen. As years progress and the threats of climate change loom larger, the need for rapid, bold, and holistic approaches to climate and energy policy becomes increasingly essential. While New York State has passed the Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act, the most aggressive and equitable climate law in the nation, we still have a long way to go to ensure that the benefits of this transition reach those that need it most. Low-income communities of color still face many obstacles in participating in the clean energy economy. Climate justice is based on the principle that frontline communities that are most vulnerable to climate change must play an integral role in planning for the renewable and regenerative energy economy. The Climate and Community Investment Act includes several key provisions to support a just transition to this clean and renewable energy economy. These provisions were developed by groups in the New Yorker News Coalition that represent communities across the state, from Brooklyn to the Bronx to Buffalo, with input from national experts and the, and broader New York, New York stakeholders. The CCIA builds on the CLCPA. It aims to raise at least fifteen billion per year from corporate polluters and invest those funds in disadvantaged communities that are most vulnerable by placing a fee on both greenhouse gases and toxic co-pollutants. The CCIA would be transformative by creating healthier communities and creating a hundred and fifty thousand jobs in the transition to the just and renewable economy. A vital pillar of the CCIA is that, that it directs funds towards vulnerable, impacted, and historically disadvantaged and frontline communities. The CCIA will provide funding for communities to help them prepare for the climate crisis ahead and empower them to lead in the local solution that New York needs. The CCIA can help fund community energy planning, energy efficiency, community-owned solar, distributed energy resources, clean public transportation, utility bill savings, and so much more. We've seen the devastating effects of worsening superstorms and what it has brought to Houston, Florida, Puerto Rico, and right here in New York City. And we cannot wait any longer to fund a just transition. Our health, our economy, and our communities are at risk. I commend the New York State Senate for elevating and prioritizing the CCIA. And New York State must support and invest in the clean renewable energy that protects our health, the health of our family, and creates jobs. We need to put the health of our communities and our state ahead of polluters' profits and our outdated and truly dangerous dependency on fossil fuels. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Ms. Hernandez. So we are, first of all, I want to welcome Senator Steck, who's joining us from the North Country. And I'm going to see if senators have questions for this panel. I'm going to start asking a question myself that I, I think is probably a question that you've been expecting and that I think a lot of average New Yorkers would ask about this, which is, let's say you're a low to middle income individual doing your best to get by, working a job or two, have family to support. What is our answer to that person about the cost of gassing up his or her vehicle going up? You know, whether some estimates and other panelists said about fifty five cents a gallon. It's not clear to me that everyone sees electric vehicles as a, as a fiscally prudent alternative or an affordable alternative, or they may not be available in every part of the state. There are a lot of excuses. I'm not saying that they're all valid, but certainly they're not common to drive down the street and see everyone driving an electric vehicle. They're, they're certainly, and our state's doing, I think, worse than, than some others in terms of getting them on the road. What do we say to those people just trying to get by that we're going to increase the cost of their daily living if this bill will be implemented? What, what is the answer to that? Any panelist could take that or all, all can take it.
Yeah, I, I can jump in first and say that, you know, the bill includes a lot of critical provisions that addresses just this issue. As was mentioned in previous panels, there is the rebate for low to moderate income households. And what we have to understand is that by scaling energy efficiency initiatives, by scaling community solar programs, there would be opportunity to reduce your utility payments in your home, to sign up for community solar projects that further decrease your utility bills. So there's a lot of incentives there that will help lower those costs.
Is there, and I know you just directed that toward the utility bill side. What about on the gassing upside?
Yeah, I think that, um, you know, we are really supportive of electrifying our public transportation. We are really supportive of incentivizing personal electrification of vehicles. That's all, that's all part of the bill, and those are all initiatives that are really critical to ensure that we do this in an equitable way.
And would some funding from this bill go toward making it easier for people to get electric vehicles or to invest in the electric vehicle infrastructure in our state?
Yes, I think that there's a lot of opportunity to, to create targeted programs for, for different parts of the state. In New York City, for example, the priority is electrifying our public transportation system, but in other parts of the state, they may have different priorities.
Any other panelists want to address that? You guys could just jump in, please.
Sure. Rachel, do you want to go first?
I was just going to say, as I think Ryan mentioned in his testimony, you know, the New Yorker News Coalition consulted with economists and mapped out, you know, what projected cost increases would be, it might be for low and moderate income New Yorkers and what would be needed to make them whole in the transition? Because there, you know, we recognize that there's a gap, you know, in the initial imposition of prices between, you know, day one and then the time that investments are made in charging infrastructure and energy efficiency upgrades. That may be like year five or year three. And so that is included in the bill now, or we made that are meant to target exactly that potential cost impact for low and moderate income New Yorkers.
And, and those are rebates beyond home utility, there are rebates in other ways? Ryan, you want to address that or anyone else?
Oh, um, sorry, Rachel, did you have a direct response as you were? Okay, I mean, again, my understanding, I mean, the, the, a lot of the rebates are around explicit utility, any, any increased costs there. And then again, the like kind of larger scale investments and transitioning for our fleets, which we need to do, right? That's part of, part of the goals. And, and increasing funding for public transit so that those costs are not, not borne. I would say too that there, you know, you know, the Business Council offered one economic analysis. There's also another economic analysis by Hugh Massett Perry, by Bob Pollin, Robert Pollin, that showed that like gas increases could be just as, uh, just as regular as like seasonal fluctuations in costs. Um, and so it's not actually outside that much of the change of volatile economic markets that determine costs as is. And then also, I feel like a really important reframing here is what are fossil fuel CEOs going to do to not pay, have exorbitant salaries and not pass on those costs? We're assuming that these costs are being passed on as a, a natural law. When they are going to be making decisions to do that for their own bottom line, when they are going to be making decisions to do that for their own bottom line without us first asking, how are they going to prioritize how much their CEO and top management gets paid? And so it just, it feels like a really important reframe that the burden is not on all of us to ask this. It's like, what are these polluters, like ExxonMobil CEO got a raise up to $23 million alone in 2019? Like, I don't think that's necessary. So I just, I feel like that's an important reframe, and I'll stop there.
Thanks, Ryan. And we're going to have Professor Pollin as a panelist later, so that's a good intro. Maritza, before I move on to Senator Kavanaugh, then Senator Corin, do you have anything? You, I saw you, I couldn't hear you because you're on mute, but I saw you maybe trying to say something. No?
Yeah, I was just going to jump in. I mean, we have to be realistic here. Like, we are moving away from fossil fuels. Companies know that. That's what's happening right now. We see the entire federal government investing in infrastructure for us to move into electrification of vehicles across the board, EV chargers. I think it is up to these fossil fuel companies and all of those folks who actually have polluted our estate to really step up here. And they have a role to play. And instead of saying, hey, we're going to increase their gas on you, on, you know, for you as a consumer, they can easily say, we're going to actually provide more incentives for folks to move to EV vehicles or something like that, right? So it's also up to them, and it shouldn't be sort of a fear. It's just mostly like the kind of thing that we've been hearing a lot about some of these kind of businesses who are essentially putting a, you know, tantrum on these issues because they don't really want to take an address the real issue at hand.
Thank you. That's very helpful. We're now going to have Senator Kavanaugh ask questions, followed by Senator Jim Gore. Corin, thank you.
Great. Thank you. And I'll take Senator Kaminsky's cue and not ask too many of the detailed questions about Professor Pollin's analysis here because he'll be here later. But just to say, I mean, this issue of equity and offsetting consumer costs beyond the utility industry, I think is an important one. I mean, there are other jurisdictions like, and I think, I think of, I think in British Columbia, there's a significant gas tax. And then consumers at the end of the year get this rebate, and they say, here's your portion of the tax. And obviously, if you saved gas, you know, you avoided much of the tax. And if you didn't save gas, you know, your rebate isn't covering your cost. But is there, I mean, that's a very, I mean, we had this money a moment ago, this 55 cents a gallon, which, you know, I imagine is, makes some generous assumptions toward the, you know, toward pushing that number to the upper end, and we'll hear more about that later. But is there, I mean, is there room for thinking more about how to gain popular support for measures like that by adjusting it, by making sure people feel like they're sharing directly in the benefits? And not just, you know, if they can manage to get their hands on an electric vehicle and make it work?
I can start off. I just, I don't know with the chat functions, who can see what. I just wanted to reiterate that the cash rebate is calculated to include both the average household impact on utilities and average gasoline use. So I slightly misspoke before when I said that it was only around utilities, so.
Oh, that's helpful. I actually, yeah, I thought I was learning something new, but I appreciate, okay.
Okay, great. Yeah, the other thing, and just in terms of popular support, I lose track with all the different things that the New Yorker News Coalition is up to because we do an incredible amount of things per week. But either it has been released or it'll soon be released, a poll that shows that there is support by 70% of New Yorkers for this policy. So I think we already have between our membership and polling and, you know, like just alone, our week, last week's Week of Action demonstrates that there's widespread support for this policy among organized communities and everyday citizens.
Are there regional variations in support? I mean, I get like a very substantial fraction of my constituents don't own cars and, you know, don't really think much about gas prices. There are many other places where virtually, and we did see this, you know, when we had many, many years of debate about congestion pricing. And, you know, we have many communities where people say like, you know, it's nice. You want me to take public transit, but it's been decades. And, you know, it takes three buses and two subways for me to get to work. And, you know, it's very nice that you think there should be more ass transit, but, you know, we've been talking about that for decades. What is the answer to people who really are car-dependent, who are not wealthy? And, you know, need to, we've set up society and housing and all kinds of things such that they need to use cars on an ongoing basis?
And I just wanted, sorry, just wanted to jump in to also add all of the economic and health benefits, right? We talked about the job projection number. There's going to be a lot more local jobs that folks can partake in, that, you know, industries, new industries that are being created, all very exciting. And then all of the health benefits and the health savings that come from having healthier communities and having clean energy in New York State. And I think it's important not to underestimate the power of those two things as well. It's not just about, you know, the short-term cost impacts, but the long-term impact on our city and our state.
Yeah, and I think, I think as Senator Kaminsky mentioned, to some extent, we're talking about objections here to get responses, not, you know, we're not necessarily, I, you know, I'm a supporter of taking very aggressive action here. But I think that, you know, these, these direct costs to people or especially to lower and moderate-income people are going to be a significant, you know, challenge for us as we go forward.
Just want to reiterate, I don't know if anyone has said this, but 30% of the revenue is directed toward, you know, defraying additional costs here. So that's a significant amount. And there's, like everyone has been saying, there's sort of different, there's multiple ways to address the problem. There's initially just the rebates and cash rebates for low- and moderate-income New Yorkers. There's also simultaneously investment in expanding public transit. So maybe people can then have more options to get to work and not have to use the car or rely on cars. And so that's, that's going to be happening at the same time. So, you know, we see it as a net benefit.
Great. Okay, thank you. Thanks, Senator Kavanaugh. Senator Corin?
Well, actually, Senator Kavanaugh was reading my mind in terms of some of this questioning. And opposite of his district is that I would venture to say 90, 95% of the people in my district have to have a car to get to work. You know, we talked about transit deserts. My entire district is a transit desert. There are very few people who live in my district that can actually walk to a Long Island Railroad station. And even if they walk to the Long Island Railroad station, unless they're going to Manhattan or, you know, have a job near some sort of a, you know, right next to another station, they still need it, you know, they still need transportation. And in terms of the mass transit improvements that are proposed for much of Long Island, there is nothing proposed to try to fix that problem. You know, there's some discussion of maybe running some bus lines. And, you know, there are things that have been on the drawing board for many, many years. So I think we've got to figure out a way that we are protecting people, middle-class and, you know, and working-class, who are just so dependent on a car. Many of these people do not have the ability to buy a new car. They have to try to, you know, they have to, they have no choice but to buy, you know, but to buy a used car. And, you know, just to have that additional burden imposed on them, while we're, and I'm totally supportive of the goals of this, they're not going to get rebates in other ways. They probably don't even own a home. Many folks are, you know, are young, still living with their parents, still trying to figure out, you know, how to make ends meet. And then what do we do, for example, about an Uber driver? And I just looked, and they said the average Uber driver may go 50, you know, may drive $50,000, 50,000 miles a year. That could be $8,000, $9,000 more to them. You know, and I just quickly do my math. I think we really have to drill down and figure out a way to amend this so that, you know, we're just not imposing this additional burden on people who are, you know, who are really struggling. And I don't know if anybody has any thoughts, you know, I just, it's a general statement, but I would love to hear any thoughts anybody might have. But thank you all for the great work you're doing.
Just quickly, wanted to jump in, and Rachel and Ryan, feel free to jump in as well. I saw you guys getting ready. So the rebate, as we mentioned, is flexible and can be applied both to, you know, your utility bill, but also transportation costs. So I wanted to clarify that as well. And, you know, this bill, we're talking about funding the transition and dealing with the issues that you are bringing up right now. The CLCPA already has a clear mandate. We have very clear emission reduction goals across all of our sectors. That's something that we have to get to already. And the CCIA is a way to fund that, to make that more equitable, to start addressing some of the issues that we need to address to ensure that the transition is equitable. So thank you for raising that issue.
Can I just follow up? So let's say an Uber driver has an additional $8,000 a year cost of 55 cents a gallon. Is there a provision in this bill that they could apply for a rebate?
So let me say, the rebate provision is automatic for all people who, you know, who would qualify based on income up to like the 60% maximum automatically if you are a taxpayer. And there's different methods that you could get the rebate. It's not going to be, you know, individually tailored to your specific circumstances. And so I think, you know, an Uber driver is an interesting example. And maybe we'll call for some more creative solutions. Uber, perhaps Uber, as a large, very profitable company, could assist Uber drivers in transitioning to electric vehicles. Like, that seems like an obvious choice here.
I mean, usually they use their own vehicles, and they, I'm just using it as an example. I think we've got to fix this piece of it because I don't hear an answer that these folks are going to automatically get some sort of reimbursement. And these are not the people that I feel should be, you know, funding this transition. I think everybody, you know, everybody in society, you know, should be funding the transition. But I think folks like this, particularly people I represent, who don't have a lot of money, who have to drive cars, who couldn't possibly afford an electric vehicle at this point, if they can't even afford a new vehicle, would be, you know, bearing, you know, much more of the burden than others.
And I do, I hear you, and I think this bill is designed specifically to avoid the sort of regressive impact that you're talking about. And just want to emphasize that it would invest $3 to $5 billion per year in automatic rebates, which could be utility assistance, could be tax credit programs. It's flexible to New Yorkers who qualify. So there's a significant rebate, and, you know, perhaps it could be approved, but there's already a significant automatic rebate provision included in the bill.
But, you know, I'd like to see provision that makes it really clear that particularly for people who are driving automobiles and they have to, you know, drive so many miles. I mean, there are people who will drive 20,000, you know, 20,000 miles a year just for commuting purposes only, you know, in my district. I think there's got to be some provisions that comes up with a very clear, you know, it's come up with a salary. Let's figure out, you know, you know, you know, what the maximum salary is to qualify for it, but then give these folks an exemption so that, you know, they're not unduly subsidizing this program. And I, and I think we could tailor some sort of a rebate program specifically for people like that as it relates to automobile users who have no alternatives at this time.
Just want to reiterate, thanks, Rachel. I think those numbers are really important to address, and thanks so much for that question. We can look into your suggestion to just get more in-depth as needed. I think one piece that I want to reiterate here is that we are making an assumption that the price on gas is going to go up. I do believe that there is a role in terms of how these corporations will need to show up here because we are, as a state and as a country, you know, moving away from fossil fuels. It is about a just transition so that more and more people will drive less cars that will need gas. And that's the overall goal. So we need to think about the transitioning out rather than how do we continue to allow for cars to be consuming gas? Thank you.
I agree. Thank you very much. Yes, I think we're, maybe we're talking about a transition period to these folks. They're not all going out and buying electric vehicles right away. They, you know, can barely, you know, survive today, particularly with some of the COVID issues. But thank you so much.
Are there any final questions for this, for these esteemed panelists? Seeing none, Brian, I assume that's an old hand you have up there?
Oh, sorry, yes.
Okay. Seeing none, we'd like to thank this panel for their time and attention. Really, testimony really means a lot. And now we're going to call panel number four, please.
Thank you.
Panel number four is going to consist of Ann Reynolds from Alliance for Clean Energy, Stephen Roundtree from Vote Solar, and Richard Burgley, the public, from the Public Utility Law Project, also known as Pulp. We would like to ask Ms. Reynolds to begin her three minutes of testimony whenever she is ready. And just to note, just to note for everyone here, not only, just like Ms. Salter, Ms. Reynolds is also a Senate appointee to the Climate Action Council.
Thank you so much. And we spent six hours at a meeting of the Climate Action Council yesterday. It was a busy day. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
So thanks so much for the opportunity to provide testimony. I'm with the Alliance for Clean Energy New York, ACE New York. We're a coalition of clean energy companies and civic and environmental groups. My, first, I want to communicate that ACE New York is supportive of the use of a carbon price as a policy tool to achieve the transition to a clean energy future, as is proposed in the CCIA. There are several options for the design and implementation of carbon pricing policies. In general, they're providing value by either aligning the financial incentives with the policy goals. So you get the directionally correct investments or generating revenue that can be reinvested in programs to reduce carbon or both. One threshold question is whether the carbon pricing policy is economy-wide or specific to one sector, such as the electricity sector. Generally speaking, an economy-wide carbon pricing policy, which is what is proposed in the CCIA, would be more comprehensive and therefore preferred. But an economy-wide carbon price might be more challenging or take longer to adopt or design or implement. And we just want to point out that if a variety of carbon pricing policies were designed that each focus on different sectors, but were sequentially and simultaneous or simultaneously implemented, the same ends could be achieved. That is, the carbon prices could be implemented in different ways in the electric sector, the transportation sector, and the building sector. Another important design question for a carbon pricing policy is how the revenue is used. You've heard a lot about that today. One approach is for consumers to pay the carbon price, but then immediately get some or all of that revenue back in some fashion. So as to be one of the consumer impact. But a different approach would be to generate a pot of money that can then be reinvested in activities that also reduce carbon emissions. This approach does a little bit of both through the rebate that you just heard about. For the electric sector, New York State could support a carbon price being integrated through the wholesale electricity market. This is a policy that's been thoroughly researched and assessed by the New York Independent System Operator, the grid operator. And ACE New York supports the integration of a carbon price into the wholesale markets. We have a paper, Building Clean Energy in New York: The Case for Carbon Pricing at the ISO, where we lay out all the reasons why. But in short, it would make it more profitable to make electricity while emitting less carbon. But that approach has to complement but not replace New York's clean energy standard. And respect to use of the revenue in that approach, roughly half of the additional revenue flows to the generators of cleaner power, and the other half is immediately returned to consumers via the utilities. For the transportation sector, New York State could support a carbon price by embracing the Transportation Climate Initiative. This is another approach that we support. It does roughly the same thing as Reggie, but in the transportation sector, there's a lot of similarities between that approach and this bill. It's another issue that's been thoroughly researched and analyzed. So there's some quantitative information about it already. But it would be very important that TCI have, like the CCIA, a framework for equitable investments, complementary programs, full transparency, equitable processes for deciding how the money is spent, and a commitment to labor and workforce development. So these two examples, TCI and Carbon Pricing at the ISO, are examples of sector-specific carbon pricing policies. As I said, we also would support an economy-wide pricing, carbon price initiative like the CCIA. And we've recognized that there are some benefits to a more comprehensive approach. This bill has excellent goals and intentions. Without commenting in detail on a lot of them, because you've heard that already, I want to make two quick points. First, simpler is better. If there are opportunities to simplify this bill while still meeting the intended goals, those opportunities should be pursued. NYSRDA and DEC already have a lot of the similar policy infrastructure in place. And duplication of reviews or reporting should be avoided as long as you can meet the intended goals. And second, I would ask that the legislature be mindful that whatever additional requirements make it more complicated or expensive to implement the or expensive to implement the actions we need will either increase the cost to New Yorkers, which will affect low-income New Yorkers more, or make it less likely that the actions we need will actually happen. So there's a balance to be struck there. And last, the major design decision in crafting a carbon pricing policy is the appropriate level to set the price. I don't have the expertise, expertise to say exactly what that price should be now or 10 years from now. But I will instead state the obvious that you want the carbon price to be high enough that it will affect consumer behavior or attract private sector investment to the desired activity or generate a dedicated revenue source to pay for good things, or possibly both or all three. But not so high that it's overly regressive or disproportionately affects already disadvantaged communities or that chills or kills economic activity and growth in New York so that people lose jobs. Or that it will become so unpopular that it's no longer politically viable. So in short, it is a sweet spot. And I don't mention that to imply that the sweet spot cannot be found. I think it can. But I think those are the criteria that we have to examine when setting that price to find out what's going to be successful. So, so thank you so much for the opportunity to weigh in.
Thank you, Ann. Mr. Roundtree?
Great. Thank, thank you all. Good morning. My name is Stephen Roundtree Jr. I'm on Lenape land in northern Manhattan. I'm the Northeast Director of the 501(c)(3) nonprofit Vote Solar. Thank you all for the opportunity to testify in favor of CCI. So in particular, we work on solar power at Vote Solar. So I just wanted to say a few opening remarks. So basically, right now, New York's energy generation capacity is still overwhelmingly met with natural gas, nuclear and legacy hydroelectric power. Currently, we're about 2.5% solar capacity as a representative of our electric grid, which is becoming our lowest-cost power generation type. Vote Solar has done some great studies looking into the future on, on what this state's going to need to do to decarbonize its grid at the lowest cost. Working through a lot of data on that, but the model showing that the most cost-effective way to meet our decarbonization mandate is with roughly 50% of New York's capacity coming from, from utility and distribution scale solar power. By 2030, this will require an increase of roughly 100%, 150% rooftop capacity. We're 2018 levels as well as about 1,700% increase in utility scale solar. So it's a lot. Current progress to date as a state about halfway to meet the six gigawatt distributed solar goal of, for 2025. This is part of the CLCPA. But there's sort of scant assurance that the next five years to 2030, we'll see the parabolic upswing that we need to meet our goals. Overall, you know, you know, that suggests we're not moving fast enough or not sure we're moving fast enough. NYSRDA and DPS have taken steps to promote the marketplace for solar. And by that standard, we've made some great, you know, a great deal of progress. But a bare mass market approach isn't efficient, isn't sufficient for our decarbonization mandate. We need to swift, comprehensive changes to our energy system, which the current funding sources largely designed to incentivize private investment. In my view, are incapable of delivering by themselves. The approaches most keenly felt obviously by, by black and brown New Yorkers and poor New Yorkers of any race. The markets, you know, mostly inefficient for region communities across New York State who are facing unjust barriers to participation due to historic racism and disenfranchisement. So a little bit more on solar. Right now, there's about 10,000 solar jobs or, you know, at the eve of COVID, about 10,000 solar jobs in the state with over 600 employers. You know, are the modeling working on that we're, again, we're not finished with is showing that, you know, we're looking at 14,000 utility scale jobs to 2030, 25K distributed solar jobs and almost 60 new community solar jobs by 2030. And this is all less expensive than business as usual and provides, as others have mentioned, a myriad of new health and economic benefits to residents. And also to address earlier concerns, once you build it, it's there and it's working and it's mostly free. So the schedule that others have noted with, with CCI in, you know, having a higher fee or higher revenues and as fossils taper off decreasing, it fits that model quite well. Just briefly, you know, having had experience with partnership between industry, and I see my time's up, so I'll wrap. Partnership between community nonprofits and the solar industry, you know, has yielded some impressive, impressive outcomes for residents and workers. You know, we act for environmental justice. My local org and my former employer, you know, turned a small grant from New York City into 14 rooftop solar arrays on affordable co-ops and a new business, right? A new solar co-op. It's looking at over a million dollars worth of work this year in northern Manhattan and the Hudson Valley. So industry partners were at the table in those conversations benefiting from communities knowing what they needed and executing on it. And I think this is just the tip of the iceberg for what this bill can represent for communities who are interested and, and need, you know, energy democracy and energy justice solutions as part of our transition. So, you know, as previously noted, healthy market conditions are key for any sector. Solar industry isn't just serving itself or its customers. It's a key component of how we stabilize the climate and protect our society. So our solutions can't solely be market incentive focused. We should be funding our energy transition with the actual transition goals in mind, not simply those of market growth. You know, to, to wrap, like we are trying to make a six-egg, six-egg omelet and we can't do it with three eggs. You know, the, the funding has got to be there. And so that's why, you know, Vote Solar is in favor of this framework and really excited to, to see it pass and to see it be its best self in the execution. Thanks.
Thanks, Mr. Roundtree. And I doubt you'll have any disagreement that you cannot make a six-egg omelet with three eggs. That is true. I'd like now to ask Richard Burgley, former employee of the New York State Senate and current director of the Public Utility Law Project to please testify.
Thank you, Senator Kaminsky and Senator Parker for holding this important hearing today. And thank you to the rest of the senators today and to those in the audience. My name is Richard Berkeley. I'm the Executive Director of the Public Utility Law Project of New York, a 40-year-old not-for-profit public interest law firm whose mission is to educate, advocate and litigate on behalf of low and fixed income utility consumers. We participate in front of federal agencies and state agencies in policy and in rate increase proceedings. And our goal is always to try and hold down the cost of energy or to stop it from increasing as fast as the private sector might like it to. We also offer direct assistance to your constituents, to utility consumers statewide. And this has been incredibly difficult during COVID-19 and the subsequent economic, which only harmed existing low-income people statewide and created a group that we're calling the newly low-income, who will be with us for many years to come, as we saw from the Great Recession. When the CLCPA became law, we committed as a state to the most aggressive clean energy and climate agenda in the country to achieve those climate goals, reconsider how every sector operates, including our economy on a large scale. And yet we have these extremely large costs of carrying out the transition that the legislature and the people of New York have set as a goal under the CLCPA. But those costs haven't been stated clearly. It's advocated all along, the cost attention must be paid to the impacts of this transition upon energy justice and environmental justice communities and upon disadvantaged communities in New York generally. And by that, I include the disabled, the medically vulnerable and moderate income New Yorkers. The Climate and Community Investment Act or the CCI is the vital piece of the CLCPA. It is fair to say that the CLCPA cannot be put into effect with CCI. And it is also, in our opinion, as compared to the New York ISO's carbon tax plan or to the gas tax plan that will come under the TCI, which we just heard about. We think this is a far more equitable and potentially a far lighter touch method of paying for the change that New Yorkers have demanded in the CLCPA. I note here, by the way, that making sure that this is a light touch and that it does the most benefit for New York at the same time as allows us to pay as we go as opposed to borrowing and spend like we've seen too often from prior federal administrations. The Senate has a vital role to make sure that this works properly. The CCI furthers the goal of the CLCPA by raising the funds, laying the groundwork for a just transition to a clean and renewable energy economy for all New Yorkers. In particular, the CCI will mandate equitable distribution of the funds collected from polluters so that those funds can address the burdens under which New York's low-income residents, most of whom live in environmental justice and energy justice communities or in rural areas that are also broadband deserts and/or have problems with chronic unemployment where they, they currently suffer. As said before, the manner in which these funds are raised is by implementing fees similar to the Regional Greenhouse Gas Initiative, which we have a long history with in New York. And we have seen it to work in a manner that supports our economy and doesn't harm taxpayers and ratepayers generally. I mentioned ratepayers because right now, after one year of COVID-19, there are more than 1.2 million New Yorkers who are 60 days and more in arrears to their energy utilities and an uncounted number of water and telephone and broadband utility consumers. Collectively, the energy consumers owe more than $1.4 billion to utilities. We advocate that that vast arrears must be dealt with in a very forward-looking manner before we can talk about all of the other transformations that are necessary for our economy to be able to move forward. The CCI is vitally necessary, but it will also have to walk hand in hand with dealing with our arrears crisis and dealing with the things that are necessary to make it possible to have the economy of the future around the state, which is the broadband, affordable and comprehensive broadband everywhere that the legislature has talked about. Ultimately, we all know that the CLCPA is costly. And we know that we must exercise sweeping foresight. And by we, I mean all of us, all of New York's leaders, the legislature-appointed officials, business leaders, community leaders. We must implement the plan of equitable action to prevent polluters from continuing to abandon New York's low and moderate income residents and put the cost of this transition onto those households as opposed to spreading out the benefits and spreading out the cost in an equitable manner. I'm going to stop here because I know the legislature would like to ask questions, but we have a great deal more on our written comments that we sent to the Senate yesterday. Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks, Richard. My first question is for Ann Reynolds. In light of your role as a member of the Climate Action Council, I would just like your, your opinion on whether you think that this, some type of pricing mechanism is something that is better set up through the Climate Action Council where you have various subcommittees considering different areas and the council generally able to hash this out, or whether you think this legislation is a better or more appropriate or more certainly more expeditious vehicle to carry out the policy.
So it's a good question. I'm not sure I totally know the answer. I will say, I think we're going to need a carbon pricing policy one way or the other. And I'm not sure that something of this breadth and depth could be done administratively. So it would have to come back to the legislature in any case.
I guess it just begs the question, should you guys be formulating the policy and then we put it in a bill? Or should we take this bill and run with it, I guess? What, what, what's the better outcome or, or what are the pluses and minuses of each?
Well, I would say there, there's been an enormous amount of activity over at the Climate Action Council. I've learned so much. And I would think whether you move this bill now or later, you should take all that into account. So one option would be to wait until the scoping plan is done in December and then have all that information.
Explain that for everybody, please.
So under the climate law, the Climate Action Council is working on this overarching plan to meet the goals of the climate law. And the draft plan is due in December. So there, we're right now getting all the recommendations from the various panels, transportation, just transition, et cetera, et cetera. And we're sticking them all together. And there's an integration analysis being done to say, how will all these recommendations work together? And what will the impact be? Both the, the societal costs and the emissions reductions. So we should have that product if all comes to pass by December.
Okay. And what do you think that should mean for, for, for our understanding of, of carbon pricing?
Well, I'm not sure that there are going to be a detailed analysis of, of what the carbon price should be set at. I mean, I tried in my remarks to mention TCI and the ISO idea, not because we don't support the CCI, but they've done a lot of analysis to show if you set it at this level, what is the impact on gas prices or on electricity prices? So I don't have the expertise to know whether, what the precise impacts of the number that's in this bill will be. But it does seem to me that we should collectively know that before it's enacted.
Do you think that the scoping report in December will help us figure out whether $55 per ton is the sweet spot or not? Will there be information in that that will help us discern that?
There might not be. I know that isn't a great answer, but we, yesterday we got reports from three of the panels. We haven't yet gotten a report on revenue, you know, how to pay for things in revenue or like TCI or carbon price or any of those. So I'm not sure if we're going to or not, but I can, you know, we definitely will know more in a month when we get the reports from those other panels about whether that would be included.
Okay. You know, look, for me, it's just for all of us, I think it's important that we don't have, as my dad would say, one hand not talking to the other or one side of your brain not talking to the other. I mean, if we're sitting here going deep into a carbon pricing analysis that we think is gaining momentum, perhaps a lot of momentum and the legislature is likely to consider to have the Climate Action Council not considering that question along some parallel path to me seems to be a wasted opportunity. Does that make sense?
It does. And it is, I'm sorry, I don't know the answer to that question, but I will say that there's been a lot of discussion about the specific direct things we need to do to reduce emissions. There hasn't yet been a lot of discussion about the mechanisms for paying for that and what the impact of a carbon price would be. So we should find out the answer to your question and know.
Yeah, I mean, look, to, to me, this is the ultimate question, right? I'm telling everybody that lives on my block, that boiler you have in your house, that's not going to be there soon. You gotta, there's going to be something else powering your home and that car you're driving. It's not going to look like that in a couple of years. And that big office building you're going to walk into, that's going to be powered differently. And, you know, I think a fair question is, well, who's paying for all that? Where is that all coming from? And that to me is the, the ultimate question, I guess, we're grappling with here. Final question for you, for me, is, is with respect to really trying to figure out whether $55 is the sweet spot or not. Do you have a general sense of where that is? Or you say, we just don't know enough to know where, where that is right now?
Yeah, I was saying, I don't know enough to know. But I think it's a question that also depends on your goals, right? And I've heard some, several people say today that the goal of this is to raise money to assist disadvantaged communities, not to modify behavior because we have the CLCPA requiring this, right? So we don't need to make people switch away from high-carbon things. We just need to have the money to pay for it. So if the goal is not to change behavior, then the price should be set at the amount of revenue you want to raise. If the goal should be to change behavior and bring the investment than you want, then the price has to be higher.
Okay. And then just before turning to Senator Parker, can you just, once again, my, my understanding is that TCI is something New York can join, but hasn't other states have. Can you just walk us through what that is? Because you brought that up as an interesting alternative or a complimentary piece?
So people describe it as the Reggie for transportation. Three states and Washington DC have agreed to do it. And then there's a batch of states, including New York, that have agreed to decide later. They're sort of signed on as observers. But the way it would work is that there'd be a cap on transportation emissions overall. And any wholesaler of transportation fuel would have to purchase allowances. The price of those allowances would be set by an auction and the proceeds from that auction would go back to the states to reinvest in transit, biking infrastructure, electrification of buses, et cetera. So it would work a lot like Reggie. So you wouldn't set a carbon price, the auction would set that, that price for you. But other than that, you know, I felt better when Richard said that he thought that this, this CCI has a lighter touch on consumers. If that's the case, then great. But I would say that since New York hasn't joined TCI yet, we can affect how it works, right? And so we can say 40% of the revenues have to be spent in disadvantaged communities. Actually, that, that's in place already because the CLCPA says it, but we can be more specific to say it has to increase mobility choices in places that don't have public transit. So if there's weaknesses with TCI, I'd say we can, we can try to advocate for fixing them and then have New York join. It does have the benefit of being a multi-state initiative. So you address the issue of, you know, people going across state lines to buy cheaper gas or, you know, having leakage in other ways in terms of emissions.
Thank you. Co-chair Senator Kevin Parker.
Thank you, Jim and Kaminsky. First, let me thank the panel for joining us today and really appreciate your testimony and your candor and your expertise. I have a question, actually kind of for, I have two questions. The first one is for Richard Berkeley. Pulp actually deals with a lot of the issues around low and moderate income utility users. Pulp actually deals with a lot of the issues around low and moderate-income utility users. What do you think the impact of, you know, you've heard some people talking about this and being concerned about the cost, particularly at the pump, for low and moderate-income New Yorkers? What do you think the impact's going to be? And how do you weigh that with the benefits that you think those same New Yorkers are going to receive in terms of the direction of these funds that this produces?
Thank you for that question, Senator, and let me start, by the way, by saying how jealous I am of all of you senators and the staff that work for the Senate right now to have this debate in front of you to solve and all the other problems that the economy has right now. It's why you went to where you are now, and I wish you all enjoy the process of fixing the problems that we're in, because that's one of the great purposes of government service, and I'm sorry I left. If I thought we'd get here, I wouldn't have. Having said all that.
If that was a pitch to come back, you know.
For a 30-year salary, you can work for all of us.
I've done that before, Senator. Thank you. So I guess the short answer is that we are always concerned about the cost of energy, the cost of water, the cost of telephone, and the cost of broadband. It's what we do. And thank you all for your partnership in those areas over a very long period of time. So we think that right now, we have a low-income program, which is a bill-discount program that we are in the process of reforming with our partners in the executive branch. And when that is done, we will have put another flag in the ground to maintain affordability for low-income households. Doing the CCIA correctly is going to be another piece to make it possible for low- and moderate-income New Yorkers to afford their energy, water, and telephone, because quite honestly, the CLCPA, and before that, the Reform in the Energy Vision, which had a $30 billion price tag, all of the changes to our energy grid that are necessary to move towards the economy that we know we need to adopt, because we get hit by thousand-year storms about every two and a half, three years. All of that is expensive, and right now, there is no place where you can look and see what the true cost is. All that's going to happen is that your constituents, your neighbors, and you are going to be hit with these costs, and you're going to wonder where they came from, because there's no discussion about how much every single thing that we've been doing for the last decade costs. The CCIA is the first step towards trying to raise money to pay for those costs. We know we have to make this transition to a clean economy. First, it's important for our children, for our seniors, and for all of us, for our health. Second, it puts us in a position to lead the United States and to lead the world in the jobs that come out of these things. And third, it gives us a unique opportunity to address, in some parts of the state, for example, in the Gowanus area of Brooklyn, a century of environmental justice problems. In upstate New York, in every small town that has an abandoned gas station in the middle of it and a superfund site underneath it, it gives us the chance to fix those problems. On Long Island, which is clustered with all sorts of problems from energy and other types of industry, it gives us a chance to clean up all of that stuff. So I think, Senator, the way that these things fit together is through the work that you and your colleagues do, the imagination that it will take to make sure all of these pieces that we're putting together to build tomorrow's economy fit together in a way that not only helps the most vulnerable of us, because that trickles up to the rest of society, and we know that it doesn't trickle down as well as many years of federal administrations would have suggested. So does that answer your question, sir?
It does. I have a second question and limited time. So I want to ask this to you and Ann Reynolds. There's been some comparison of the CCIA with Reggie, and I wanted to hear, and I think erroneously, you know, about that. And Mr. Roundtree, I don't want to leave you out. You can certainly, if you have some thoughts about this, certainly jump in here. But I'd love to hear, you know, you folks' thoughts about the differences between Reggie and CCIA. And I actually think that they're complementary, and correct me if I'm wrong about that.
So there are some differences. CCIA is economy-wide, and Reggie is just electricity. Reggie has a cap on emissions, whereas CCIA does not. It's just charging for the emissions. But there are some similarities. Reggie results in a pot of money, you know, just to put it that way, that's then reinvested back in great things. I don't think there's anyone who thinks the stuff that Reggie has paid for over the years is bad. There's been occasions where big amounts of money have been diverted from Reggie for non-Reggie purposes, which is so unfortunate, and we hope that doesn't happen. CCIA, though, is the same in that it would result in a pot of money that then would be reinvested in things that people want. The difference in CCIA is it puts frontline communities at the center of the decision-making of how that money is spent. And so I think that would be a welcome change. But I actually think that the types of things that the money would pay for would be the same, except Reggie's, one last thing I want to mention, Reggie is, since it's just for electricity, it's not investing in helping with electric school buses or transit or biking infrastructure, and there is no source of revenue for that. And that's why we support the Transportation Climate Initiative, and we would also support if there's money for that through something like CCIA, because more than electricity, where there is methods in place to pay for things, there is no dedicated source of revenue on the transportation side to get school districts to buy electric buses, to get the transit agencies, and we need that source of funding dedicated.
And I'd like to concur generally with what Anna said, and one point that I think no one has made to this point is things like subsidies for electric cars and school buses come out of individual energy rate cases right now, and they're not subject to the kind of transparent and large-scale, you know, sector and statewide discussion as you're having right now. So we've been fighting against direct cash subsidies for electric vehicles in the rate cases now for almost six years. We obviously have supported subsidies for, in these rate cases, for mass transit, again, because we believe in a very simple concept, more green for less green. And that's a goal that we all have to reach toward as New Yorkers, more green for less green. And I point to Long Island, which has been leading the state in this concept for quite a long time. So let me stop there and see if there are any more questions, Senator.
Senator Parker, you have anything else?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Senator Kavanaugh?
Thank you very much. This has been very informative. A question, we touched on this on other panels, but all of you are very focused on, you know, for obvious reasons, on the greenhouse gas emissions. But do you have an opinion about the value of expanding to other emissions, sort of combining an approach to limit or tax greenhouse gas emissions with expanding taxes on other emissions?
So I'd like to go first, actually, and I think I've had this discussion with you before, Senator, many years ago, when I had the pleasure of working for the Senate and for the Assembly when I knew back then. It's not a question in a vacuum. There are already taxes done, all the other things, all the other types of business, all the other types, not all, but many other types of activity in New York. And so the question is really about how do we get to a rational balance that allows us as a state to build our economy in a clean and broadly supportive manner going forward? The old economy, you know, affirmatively abandoned groups of people at various times, and you see the, you know, the outcomes of that. I think that a discussion by the legislature on how the entire tax system should be reformed and so that taxes can be allocated in a rational and supportive and equitable manner across all of New York's economy is a good conversation to have. And even things like, for example, we've been fighting since 2015 to get National Grid in New York City to pay for the cost of its superfund sites. It has been pushing traditionally to make its ratepayers pay 100% of that cost. We think that's wrong. That's only one example, but there are other things like that going on that different tax policy and different regulatory policies can change.
So I'll just briefly note that, you know, in looking at an economy-wide, economy-wide sort of fee structure, you know, for disadvantaged communities in New York State, like the hazards compound. So if you're somewhere where you're near a peak or plant, you're also likely near a transit corridor, and you're also likely living in a home that has poor indoor health. So I think it's like, if we're looking at health outcomes, it's just, it's really important to be looking across, sort of across media and making these things work, just for really preserving quality of life for New Yorkers as the climate crisis intensifies.
Just as Mr. Roundtree, as a mechanism, I mean, recognizing that many sources that are emitting greenhouse gases are also emitting other pollutants, as a mechanism, do you get, you get a sort of, is it sufficiently, is it reasonably efficient to get at, to use greenhouse gases as a, I mean, greenhouse gases are a target here, but also to use them as a proxy for other emissions, other air quality problems? Or should we be, as CCIA proposes, focusing on pricing, you know, basically a wider range of emissions?
I think it's a tough question. I mean, you know, I don't want to prognosticate too much. I think it makes sense to me, but I don't have the expertise to really tell you that that's like, you know, the most efficient way to do this.
Okay, maybe, and some of what I'm asking may be from your prior, I think you were, we act. Some of these may have been more salient in there, but okay, thank you. Any other comments before?
Can I take a shot at answering that question, too? I think one answer to the question is yes. If you may have a charge on carbon emissions, it is a good proxy for other co-pollutants. But there is still concern that at the community level, you're not necessarily getting to those sources that have the most co-pollutants. And there can be a big difference between a diesel bus belching pollution at lung level and a large power plant that might be in a rural area and might be very efficient, although still, except for carbon, right? It's efficient for the other co-pollutants. And so I would, I would say, though, and this is based on from my previous job when I was at DEC, the Title V air emissions were dropping precipitously over time. And when I was at DEC, came back to the legislature several times to ask for the fees to be increased, because the fees pay for the staff at DEC, and they were down so much, because a lot of these large facilities have, they have such a financial incentive to become more efficient, right? Because they're making rational decision-making. And it's the smaller air quality sources like auto shops and nail salons and dry cleaners and bus depots that are those sources that are not decreasing and are closer to where people live and are not Title V facilities. So I do think there might be reasons to examine if you could apply those fees in the disadvantaged communities, if you're trying to affect those sources and not in other places or not apply them to just Title V. So you're getting at the sources that people are actually concerned about.
Really helpful. Thank you.
Are there any final questions for this set of panelists? Hearing and seeing none, I really want to thank them for their expertise today. Really, really appreciate it. That was very informative, and we will now move on to panel number five. For those keeping track, we are halfway through our panels.
Thank you, Senators.
I would like to welcome for panel number five, Wes Gillingham, Associate Director of the Catskill Mountain Keeper, Elizabeth Moran from NIPER, Rose Marie River from Citizen Action, and Mo Yan Tan from Jobs to Move America. So I'd like to first ask Mr. Wes Gillingham to begin his three minutes of testimony. Thank you all for being here.
Thank you. I'm Wes Gillingham, co-founder and associate director of Catskill Mountain Keeper. Catskill Mountain Keeper's mission is to protect our region's wild lands and natural resources, support smart development, nurture healthy communities, and accelerate the transition to 100% clean energy future for New York and beyond. As an original member of New York Renew's Coalition of More Than 275 Environmental Justice, Faith, Labor, Community, and Environmental Organizations from all across New York, we totally and wholeheartedly support the CCIA. This is the nation's foremost climate justice policy. It's been adopted and adapted throughout the country as an equity standard. The CLCPA and this companion bill, the CCIA, are two pieces of a puzzle that make our transition away from a fossil fuel economy possible. I want to thank the senators for this opportunity to testify on this really important bill. As you've heard from my colleagues across the state, the summary of the bill, it's a framework to smooth out a transition off fossil fuels. It's an opportunity to enhance our economy. It turns the idea of the economy versus the environment on its head. It gives, it addresses the urgency of the climate situation and the need to fund these efforts to make that transition. This is a huge lift for our economy to make such a transition. And I want to address, I'm going to take this opportunity to address some of the things that have been talked about. There's been questions throughout the day on the price of carbon, on the increase of gas prices and what the impacts would be. And as Catskill Mountain Keeper, we have a high priority around what the impact will be on rural communities. And I just want to really point out the big picture here. This is not just a government mechanism to raise some money to pay for government services. This is a real-world example of how New York State is starting to create policy that addresses the real cost of our dependency on fossil fuels. Before founding Catskill Mountain Keeper, my sole income was as a vegetable producer up here in the Catskills. And we supported, my family supported 150 other families and supplied them with vegetables. But we faced three, 200-year floods and a 500-year flood in a five-year period. That was not Hurricane Irene. That was not Hurricane Storm. Those were unnamed storms. That is happening all across New York on a regular basis. That is the front lines of climate change, and that's impacting farmers. We have farmers across the state that are struggling to maintain the economy, and there's all these discussions about the price of carbon and carbon offsets, and how can you pay for farmers for better farming practices to sequester carbon? And let's be real here, $15 million is a drop in the bucket for what we as a state are going to have to do to transition to less dependency on fossil fuels. And there's going to be so many nuanced issues to deal with that. This is just the beginning of the process, and it's a small step. It sounds big. It's a long bill. There's a lot of pages there. There's a lot of, there's talks of rebates and these different buckets of funding. We have to jump on this, and we have to do this now. This is a very serious transition that needs to take place. There is going to be a whole host of recommendations that come out of the Climate Action Council that will need to be addressed. Those will need to be addressed, sometimes not just in the plan and within the law of the CLCPA. The senators and the Assembly will have to come up with companion bills to fit into these first two, the Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act and the Climate and Community Incentive Act, Investment Act, to really make this transition. It is a huge impact across the state to make this transition. We have to jump on it now. We have to take the incentives to do it for the sake of urban communities, rural communities, people across the state. This is a transition that we all have to embrace and be part of and going forward. And I stopped there because that's, I'm past three minutes.
Thanks, Mr. Gillingham. We'll now turn to Liz Moran.
Good afternoon. My name is Liz Moran, and I'm the Environmental Policy Director for the New York Public Interest Research Group, or NIPER. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today to discuss the importance of holding climate polluters accountable through the Climate and Community Investment Act. NIPER strongly supports the CCIA and urges passage this legislative session. As one of the largest states in the nation's financial capital, New York's leadership on climate change can shape U.S. policy. Additionally, New York has a strong history of holding polluters accountable for the pollution they've created, namely through the 1986 Environmental Bond Act, which, combined with the state's superfund program, has helped put polluters on the hook for the costs of toxic waste cleanups. In order to achieve New York's crucial climate goals, there will need to be an influx of funding to meet needs, which should come from the polluters that put New York and the world in the climate crisis rather than everyday taxpayers. The last four years have been the hottest in recorded history, and a warming planet has dire consequences. Burning fossil fuels is a leading contributor to climate change, and the oil and gas industry has known this for decades. Yet numerous meter reports have documented that the industry chose not to alert the world to these dangers and curb fossil fuel extraction. Instead, industry used hot-wired lobbyists and campaign Instead, industry used hotwired lobbyists and campaign contributions to deceive the public and undermine action. New York's environmental funding needs are enormous. It's been estimated that the state will need to invest at least $4 to $5.5 billion annually to ensure the state moves off of fossil fuels and provides a just transition to displaced workers. Meanwhile, the state has lost many lives and is facing a steep fiscal cliff and tremendous job loss due to the coronavirus pandemic. The communities hit hardest by COVID are the same communities bearing the brunt of the climate crisis, which is no coincidence. The CCI will help put New Yorkers back to work and reduce the climate and air quality pollution that has made COVID worse in so many communities. The CCI will enact a fee on greenhouse gases and co-pollutants with the starting price of $55 per ton. Over the first 10 years, this will raise $15 billion, which will ensure polluters fund a just transition off fossil fuels and benefit the communities that have been the most harmed. There is broad support amongst the public for the polluters pays principle. Recent national polling found up to 82% of Americans support this concept. Additionally, a poll recently conducted in New York State found that voters in New York backed a tax on corporate polluters 69% to 23%. Lastly, concerns have been raised about how this will impact ratepayers, particularly those from low to moderate income households. Thankfully, the CCI addresses this in a number of ways, including a rebate program, dedicated funds for frontline communities, and directing the PSC to identify and mitigate utility price increases. Over time, the investments the CCI will make into public transit and transitioning the state off of fossil fuels will save New Yorkers money from energy efficiency savings to the very costs on public health. There's no time to waste. New York should move on this legislation as soon as possible. Thank you again for the opportunity to testify today.
Thank you, Liz. Ms. Rivera?
Yes. Hello. I just want to say thank you to the members of the Senate Environmental Conservation and Energy Committee. My name is Rosemary Rivera. And I'm Rivera. I'm the Co-Executive Director of Citizen Action of New York. It's a grassroots organization. We have thousands of members in eight chapters and affiliates throughout the state of New York. And we organize in some of the most distressed neighborhoods in our state. I want to thank you for your patience as we also join the other steering committee members of New York Renew's in enthusiastically supporting the Climate and Community Investment Act, the CCI. I'm going to summarize my written testimony. So while the passage of the Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act was a really major step forward, more work is really needed to ensure its goals are achieved. Simply put, we need massive public investment. Basically, we need your help. First, we agree with numerous other testifiers that a polluter fee is the right mechanism to generate this needed public investment. While renewables like wind and solar have become cost competitive, the massive transitions we must make still cannot happen without significant public investments. Government was central to so many other past major transformations of the U.S. economy, both good and bad, including the internet and the interstate highway system. So solving the climate crisis will be no different. The fossil fuel industry has routinely sacrificed the health of black, brown, and low-income communities for profits over decades. It's simply the right thing to do to hold polluters accountable for the harm that they've created. Second, we believe that the bill correctly targets many of the systemic inequities in our state. The bill rightly prioritizes the creation of jobs in communities most impacted by the climate crisis and mandates that projects that receive state assistance create quality jobs through requirements like prevailing wages and project labor agreements. It is true that some New Yorkers are likely to be negatively impacted by higher energy bills in the short term, particularly those of us who live upstate New York. That's why we're excited that 30% of the revenue generated by the polluter fee will be devoted to direct assistance to low and moderate income families, small businesses, and nonprofits to ease the anticipated increased energy. Third, we believe that the CCI correctly prioritizes investments where they're needed the most, low-income communities of color. The CCI allocates 1/3 of the polluter fee revenue raised to community-based organizations in or serving frontline communities for local programs like community solar, energy-efficient homes, and green infrastructure. I just want to give one example of the many neighborhoods that will benefit from the just transition funding in the CCI. And that's right near the state Capitol in Albany. The Sheridan Hollow neighborhood has a high percentage of people of color whose health has been harmed by a local fossil fuel plant that has been in operation for, you know, over a, over a century. Thankfully, due to years of opposition by local organizations, including SHARE and Citizen Action, the state in 2019 abandoned its plans to install two additional gas-fired turbines at state-owned facilities on Sheridan Avenue to serve the Capitol and Empire State Plaza. However, we believe that more must be done to address those harms and are campaigning for the state Capitol and Empire State Plaza to be entirely run on renewables. That's the kind of project, and I think you've heard many throughout these hearings, that could be funded under the CCI. And we're really glad that the bill builds in extremely strong processes for public participation and local control. Thank you for listening to me.
Thanks, Ms. Rivera. I really appreciate it. And the final panelists will have testimony from Ms. Tam.
Hi. Yes, members of the committee, thank you for this opportunity to speak on the Climate and Community Investment Act. I'm Mo Yan Tan. I am the New York Policy Researcher, speaking on behalf of Jobs to Move America. We are a strategic policy center focused on making sure our public investment in infrastructure do the most public good, creating good jobs and healthier communities. Jobs to Move America, alongside our allies from New York Renew's, urge you to pass the CCI this year in order to address the ongoing issue of climate change and the current economic crisis brought on by the pandemic. The CCI would address carbon pollution while investing billions of public dollars in new infrastructure, from electric buses for our transit system to solar panels and wind turbines. The CCI would assure that the 150,000 jobs created would contribute to a green economy with good wages and benefits that help communities thrive. The CCI includes Jay May's signature Good Job Procurement Policy, which is called the U.S. Employment Plan. U.S. Employment Plan would require renewable energy projects and transit infrastructure funded by the CCI, primarily focused on the supply chain, to create good green jobs through the government contracting process. Through the procurement process, bidders are given credit for proposing certain wages, benefits, training, and retraining programs, and targeted hiring of people traditionally excluded from manufacturing, such as returning citizens and women of color. It encourages bidders to compete up in order to win the contract as those who with the most robust commitments are scored higher. Manufacturers could also commit to building facilities in New York State. Once a bidder wins the project, these commitments become legally enforceable in the contract. There's the potential to reinvigorate and catalyze New York's manufacturing committee and create thousands of good green jobs. Manufacturing of offshore wind turbines in New York State and the U.S. is an exciting new growth industry, as well as growing the transportation manufacturing sector in New York State, such as building electric buses and charging infrastructure, to name a few. For example, through the U.S. Employment Plan, New York State can assure that the manufacturing of offshore wind towers at the Port of Albany and the transitioning to offshore wind components at the GE facility in Spina City, which creates good family-sustaining jobs with high labor standards. The U.S. Employment Plan in the bill encourages these industries to locate in New York by giving extra credit to these bids that partner with New York factories. Through these strong labor provisions, the CCI can contribute to sustained economic recovery. We encourage our committees to support the CCI to pass this year in order to start New York State on its economic recovery and continue to address the ongoing climate crisis. And thank you very much for your attention and the ability to address this critical crisis issue.
Thank you very much for that. Are there any questions from the panel? Are Senators Kavanaugh and Parker's hands up from last time or this time?
It was up from last time, so.
Okay, Senator May. Senator Rachel May asked the first set of questions.
Yeah, thank you. So I'm glad to hear about the jobs issue. I'm wondering, to what extent are the jobs that would be created ones that require a lot of training? And to what extent are they ones where people could step in right away and take those jobs?
I guess I'll address that first. Yeah, so one example we tend to use are like diesel bus mechanics. They're already, you know, know the basic functions of what needs to be done, but there would be an element of retraining to then work on the electric buses. So that's, and that's an element of a just transition that we would like to address through the training and retraining, including in the contracting process.
And just for anyone in the panel, in terms of that job training, is there, is there a vision for how that would be done? Would be, we'd be using our existing SUNY system for that? I just came from an event at the Syracuse Educational Opportunity Center, which does training for construction trades, for example. I just am wondering what, what vision is there for how we get people trained for these jobs?
I'd be happy to address that. And I know that Catskill Mountain Keeper has worked on this as well. Wes would like to add anything here. So yes, I think SUNY would be a fantastic avenue for clean energy training. NiPerg strongly supports funding for SUNY's Offshore Wind Training Institute and a SUNY Clean Energy Workforce Academy. SUNY's done a lot of work transitioning their facilities off of fossil fuels and greening their facilities, and they would be a fantastic avenue to train the workforce. They even have plans to target the communities that would benefit the most from these job programs.
The only thing I would add to that, that these programs have the opportunity for real innovation for community groups and, you know, regional organizations to get involved and come up with some real innovative solutions and put the funding behind it so that they can take off and then be models to be replicated in other parts of the state. There are a lot of organizations across the state that are, that are looking at what needs to happen in their transition, how it affects, you know, from church groups to, you know, regional groups. And it really, this incentivizes innovation and thinking outside the box.
Thank you.
Do any other senators have questions for these panelists? Okay, hearing and seeing none, I would like to thank these panelists for their excellent testimony. And now we're going to move on to panel number six. Panel number six is going to consist of Fred Cowell from the United University Professors, Professions, rather, Michael Menzer from CUNY at Brooklyn College, Aaron Strong from Hamilton College, and Robert Pollan from UMass Amherst. I will betray a bias to tell you, I'm very excited for this panel in particular and want to make sure we dig in with questions for them based on their expertise in this area. So we're going to start with Fred Cowell from United University Professions to start with your three-minute testimony, and then Dr. Menzer after that. Fred, you there?
Sorry about that. I just had to unmute myself.
There we go.
Yep, thanks. Senator Kaminsky, Senator Parker, distinguished members of the Senate Standing Committees, thank you for granting me the opportunity to testify about the Climate and Community Investment Act. And thank you for your leadership on the climate crisis. Senator Kaminsky, for leading on the Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act a couple of years ago, and Senator Parker for sponsoring the CCI. I also thank Senator May for raising the questions that she just did concerning SUNY's role in dealing with the climate crisis. My name is Frederick Cowell. I'm the President of United University Professions, the largest higher education union in the nation. And I just want to make a couple of personal comments. Since you have my written testimony and we've heard from so many experts from environmental organizations that we are proud to ally with, UUP strongly supports the passage of the CCI, just as we supported the passage of the historic CLCPA. You might ask why UUP takes these stands on issues that seem not to be directly related to our mission as a labor union. Well, first, we are a union of scientists, medical professionals, serving patients, and educators, serving students. As such, we are committed to the truth and the future. The climate crisis is real and we must face it and deal with it immediately and aggressively. This struggle will define the future for the students we serve and the generations that will follow them. Second, as a union of medical professionals, we have been treating COVID patients at Downstate, Upstate, and Stony Brook for over a year. This pandemic is, like the climate crisis, a manifestation of the unending, unrelenting exploitation of our natural world. Lacking a respectful balance for the natural world has led to COVID, the climate crisis, and the core foundation to both of these crises, environmental injustice. Third, we must also come to realize that the sacrifices this crisis will call on us to make will not be easy or painless. This is why the CCI is so vital for our struggle. It protects those who have suffered too much already and will suffer the most in either the transition to a green economy or due to environmental catastrophes that will grow in severity if we don't make the transition. The CIA must pass, and it must pass immediately, and the governor must sign it. The urgency of the crisis cannot be overstated. The costs of delay are unimaginable. We are all summoned to this struggle. Time will tell if enough of us join together to create a better future for our children and for generations to come. If we fail, the future will be terrible for those yet to be born, and history will never forgive us. Thank you, senators.
Thank you very much, Dr. Menzer.
Thank you, Senator Kaminsky, and thanks to Senator Parker. I'm a constituent of Senator Kaplan, so thanks to all of you for having me. I'm a professor at Brooklyn College CUNY and in philosophy and urban sustainability studies. And I'm also a Long Island resident who's involved with the campaign to reimagine LIPA. So I want to come at it from a little bit of a different angle. I'm honored to be on with all the panelists we've, we've heard from today. I want to focus a little bit more on the new authority that's been created by the CCI. Ninety years ago, a little bit of history, amidst the devastation of the Great Depression, a technological revolution was in its early phases, electrification and the building of the U.S. electrical grid and power stations. Recognizing the power of these new technologies and the failures of oligopoly capitalism, sound familiar? New York, under the guidance of the State Senate, created a new public institution, the New York Power Authority, to make sure that the hydroelectric power generated from Niagara Falls would serve the greater good of the state. And across New York State and the U.S., public power authorities and cooperatives helped usher in a democratic power system to connect urban and rural, rich and poor, and serve the public good of the nation. Today, we find ourselves in a similar momentous time and myriad crises, economic, public health, racial injustice. And yet the opportunity with respect to renewable energy and programs to advance sustainability resilience. And a new system is in the making. Technological innovation is booming, but we need a set of public institutions to make the new system democratic and just. As a professor at CUNY who studies and teaches about democracy, sustainability, and resilience, and as a practitioner who works with climate scientists, communities, and public agencies as the Associate Director for Public Engagement at the Science and Resilience Institute, also based at CUNY, I tell you that the climate authority proposed by the CCI could be just such a transformative institution. And we at CUNY, and I'm sure SUNY, would welcome being partners of such an institution. The need for a climate authority is clear. For the process of climate adaptation to be efficacious and just, we need an institution dedicated to the transition that is competent, focused, inclusive, and accountable. The 13-member board with representation from labor, EJ communities, youth, and various geographic regions is just such a model and would help forward the goals of the CLCPA. Such a board composition would also distinguish it from less accountable public authorities that are also less representative across New York State. And that's important. This isn't just another authority. It's as innovative as NiPrg was and is, but even more democratic, more inclusive, and more focused on justice. In my capacities at CUNY and as the co-founder and president of the board of the participating budget project, I have worked with communities and government agencies across the U.S. to make sure that public money serves the public need. This happens with those with the knowledge and expertise, are connected with agency personnel, and with communities. And when there is a comprehensive analysis of community needs as well as mechanisms for diverse stakeholders to give input on policies, proposals, and projects, and support for sustained engagement. A well-designed climate authority could work with and support public partners, such as CUNY and SUNY, to integrate to integrate climate scientists and community participation and enhance inter-agency coordination with NYSERTA and with the Climate Action Council to promote inclusive, informed collaborations which are necessary for adaptive learning and management to advance the public good and center those excluded from so many past efforts to create a truly just, sustainable, and resilient system. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Professor Strong.
Thanks so much, and I'm going to pick up a little bit with where Dr. Menzer left off and talk about the authority. So greetings and thank you, Senators Kaminsky and Parker and committee members for the opportunity to speak to you today. My name is Aaron Strong and I'm an Assistant Professor of Environmental Studies at Hamilton College, where I teach courses on climate change and do research on climate impacts, strategies for climate resilience, carbon accounting methods, and climate change policy. I live in Clinton, New York, in Oneida County with my wife and three little kids, ages six, four, and two. It's been quite a pandemic and I'm proud to be represented by Senator Rachel May, who is, of course, on the committee here with us today. You will have heard and you will hear today from many stakeholders about why climate justice and a just transition are important, about why we must make polluters pay. In my comments to you, I want to offer my perspectives as someone who has been studying climate policy implementation for over a decade. In particular, I've spent a lot of time studying California's climate policy implementation, which has primarily relied on an economy-wide cap and trade program along with compliance-grade offsets. From 2013 to 2015, I worked with the California Air Resources Board's Technical Working Group developing administrative rules for offset protocols that were to be used under their cap and trade program. In analyzing and assessing the Air Resources Board's approaches to implementing California's signature climate law, my colleagues and I learned a lot about and published several papers on state-level carbon price management and implementation. Today, I want to relay some of those lessons learned in the context of your consideration of the CCIA. Two lessons learned from California. First, the California Air Resources Board, which already existed as a state agency before the passage of the law, while working hard, was thoroughly underprepared and understaffed for the detailed level of work to administer the cap and trade program and the carbon pricing system in California. They tried to rely on consultants to quickly analyze key program elements, but this led to significant challenges. Ensuring the environmental integrity of any scoping plan's regulations or managing the details of carbon pricing systems requires simply an enormous amount of work. They say there's no silver bullet for climate change, and there isn't. But the devils are in the details of each of the solutions that we try to implement as we've been discussing for the several hours leading up to this panel today already. There's a lot at stake here. So what is needed to address the climate crisis is large-scale investment in overseeing the transition away from fossil fuels. We need a dedicated investment authority to oversee and organize the spending of these funds. The CCIA gives us that. Secondly, we hear frequently that there can be no climate action without climate justice and that there's no climate justice without racial and social justice. What does that mean? Well, it means that an effective carbon pricing policy, whether a fee or otherwise, cannot work if there is not a concerted and dedicated focus on how the revenues and resources generated are allocated. California's cap and trade program and several proposed bills that were considered in Washington and Oregon have regularly failed to address considerations of climate justice adequately. Fee and full dividend does not work. Getting this right is not just politically expedient, it is necessary for achieving the ambitious goals set out in the CLCPA that was already passed. So we have the CLCPA and its targets. Why is the CCIA needed? The Climate Action Council is working hard, but I want everyone to just think about what's at stake here. Close your eyes. Imagine every furnace, every boiler, and every basement of every house in New York State. Imagine every pickup truck driving on every state highway. Imagine every old farmhouse with every gas range that exists. Imagine every rural diner. The challenge of decarbonizing in a way that works for all of New York is simply monumental. We have the technology, we have the solutions, we know we can electrify, and we know we can create great jobs while doing it. But the shift is simply enormous and needs strong investment. The text of the CCI bill before you reads, "Without adequately devoting state resources and personnel, the outlined emissions reductions and electrification goals of the CLCPA will not be realized in the target timeframe." That is why we need the CCIA. Thank you.
Thank you, Professor. Now we have Professor Pollan, who was brought up quite frequently in previous panels, whose work was brought up, and now we have the man himself. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for having me. I'm very happy to have the opportunity to testify in support of the CCIA. It's a critical measure aimed at fundamentally addressing our current global climate emergency. And specifically, I think the CCIA is a program that will enable New York State to hit the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change Emission Reduction Targets, the intermediate target being 50% emission reduction by 2030, which is only nine years from now. I'm not going to speak on the climate science aspects of it. I want to speak on economic impacts. The bottom line is that this measure will be a major new source of job creation in New York State over the next 10 years. These will be jobs I will emphasize that will be sustained over the full decade of the investment program. I have some knowledge of this because, first of all, I did a study in 2017 on New York State specifically on a similar kind of proposal right here, which is clean energy investments for New York State. It focused on energy efficiency and renewable energy investments in order precisely to hit the climate reduction target, the 50% emission reduction target. And we estimated that roughly speaking, it would generate about 150,000 jobs in the state. Just yesterday, we released a new brief report on New York State that is associated with the federal Thrive Agenda, which is now a bill introduced by Senator Markey of my own state, Massachusetts, and Representative Dingle of Michigan. And that this brief report also reached similar conclusions with respect to the employment impacts of the Thrive Agenda as applied specifically in New York. In other words, the CCIA program, which I have not specifically modeled the CCI program per se, but it's very similar in its goals and in its design to the program I did study in 2017 and the Thrive Agenda, which is in the range of 150,000 jobs. And if you want, I can go through the methodology as to how I got it. I'm not making the numbers up. Now, if we look at the Biden program that was introduced last month, aiming again at basically hitting our emission reduction targets, but in terms of the level of expenditure, it's about one-third the size of the Thrive Agenda, the Markey-Dingle proposal. We don't know, of course, what's going to end up coming out of Congress over the next months, but it'll be clear that it'll be necessary for the whatever comes out to be supplemented significantly by state-level action. There's going to be jobs across the board. Construction, biggest source of job creation, electrician sales, management, electricity engineering, office support. It will also lower energy costs for consumers. It's straightforward. When you advance energy efficiency, you lower energy costs. In addition, renewable energy is now cost competitive now, according to the US Department of Energy with fossil fuels. So I'll end there. I think it's a critical and much well-designed program for the state.
Thank you, Professor. So for the senators who have hung around, you will be rewarded by being able to ask questions beyond the three-minute clock. I just think this panel is too important to restrict, and there's not so many of us that it would that it would take so much time. So I'm going to start by asking Professor Pollan a question about the Business Council's estimate of 55 cents per gallon added to a customer's and, you know, in average driver's gasoline bill. That would seem to be a very scary number. Obviously, people would, I think, freak out if they knew they were paying $10 more or more beyond every time they gas up their car. Your work was cited as that's a BS number. So I'm just hoping you could tell us what your work says about the price at the pump and how we should go about thinking about that.
Well, basically, what the estimates are that, you know, you're going to get for every increase of a carbon tax, let's say $25 per per ton, you're going to get 25 cents on the gasoline price. So depending on how you design the CCIA specifically, you will get some increase in the gasoline price. But what you're also getting, keep in mind, is that you're getting investments in energy efficiency, which include public transportation as well as support for electric vehicles and other high-efficiency vehicles, which that reduces the cost. So even if you have a higher gasoline price, you go further with the gasoline. In addition, the transition to electric vehicles is going to enable New Yorkers to to buy into cheaper energy. So the cost of a solar energy, for example, having come down 90%, 82% in nine years and with continuing to come down, solar energy to generate a kilowatt of electricity is now cheaper than coal, now cheaper than coal.
No, fair enough. I think barriers to EVs are a real thing that I hear from from my constituents just in terms of infrastructure everywhere, getting it in their house, price competitiveness, et cetera. And so it's just a it's a really a who makes the first step in the dance issue, to me anyway, about being able to convince people that it's worth paying more now to get these investments back later as opposed to having those alternatives ready to avoid the costs in the first place. So I like to say to someone, hey, go buy an EV. You're not going to have to pay more at the pump. But if their answer is, well, you go you go give me the difference in what it costs to two X and Y, I'll go buy an EV, it's easier. So I think a lot of people in this panel are trying to think through how to do that in a way that isn't scare people and makes people want to want to buy in because they know we give them the power of choice.
Well, the Biden proposal and the Markey-Dingle proposal actually has very significant subsidies for EVs. And in fact, then the proposal that I wrote for New York State in 2017 also had subsidies for electric car purchases. So to your point, give me the difference between buying a gasoline car and an EV. That's exactly what the subsidy does.
Okay, I appreciate that. And this is to any of the professors on the on the on the panel now. Are any countries in Europe doing this or is anyone else anywhere doing this? Do we have a real-world experience with a province, a state, a region anywhere that's that's done this straight up? And what have we seen in that? Or has anyone come close?
Yeah, I can answer that, Senator Kaminsky. Thanks for the question. I laughed about this earlier. We were watching the panel with my class and my lecture, the previous class had gone through the experience with carbon taxes around the world, and you had asked that question earlier, so I really liked it. We have carbon pricing mechanisms, whether cap and trade or carbon taxes, that have been tried at national and subnational levels in 60 jurisdictions around the world. The European Union has a cap and trade system called the Emissions Trading System that has been effective at establishing a baseline carbon price. And we've had, I think this has been referred to previously, some experience with the carbon tax in British Columbia. Many of those taxes or cap and trade programs have established prices per ton that are a little bit lower than the $55 per ton, and that's, you know, per short ton that's proposed in the CCIA. California's carbon price right now is about $17.50. The analysis from all of those systems is that they've been able to achieve their goals. But I'll be honest, it's hard to trace whether their emissions reduction goals have been directly related to the the price signal that's in the market. And part of that is because we've seen such whole-scale shifting away from coal to natural gas in our electricity sectors in many places and really big investments in renewables all over the world. So tracing precisely that those carbon taxes have led to those emissions reductions is not always a claim I want to make. But what I will say is that we haven't seen any huge mishaps with skyrocketing prices because of carbon taxes that are implemented in in subnational jurisdictions like provinces in Canada or and increasingly now even in China, they're looking at carbon price, regional carbon pricing mechanisms. Several Latin American countries in South America are now implementing carbon prices as well. So taken as a whole, the result is simply this, that carbon prices have been used. They've been effective at driving emissions reductions and investments in a transition, and they haven't led to economic devastation.
There, I don't know if this is apocryphal or just bad press or my misinterpretation of the press, but I think there's a view out there that a lot of these policies led to the yellow vest riots in France. And then every, you know, when we talk about this policy, everyone says, watch out, you know, you start taxing people, tax the air, tax the water, tax the electricity, tax the gas. You're going to have a yellow vest riot. Look what happened in France. So just putting your political science hat on for a second, assuming you have one, which I'm sure you do. We all we're all amateur political scientists. If you can just tell us how have these been received, why have some places have it accepting populations? And what happened to that France example?
Yeah, it's a great example. I'm actually trained as a climate scientist and I'm a carbon cycle scientist who stumbled into policy because we're trying to manage the carbon cycle. So I'm more comfortable talking about how we put carbon in trees and soils than anything else. But the yellow vest protests were about fuel fuel prices. I think there was a broader political science analysis that there was an undercurrent of of concern about too many things happening too quickly there. I think that's a legitimate conversation that we should focus on here. But why I think that CCIA is an important direction here is that I'm not convinced that the CLCPA is going to create the incentives and drive an organization to effectively steer decarbonization. The yellow vest protests are not ongoing in in France. So there's that little shock sticker shock example. But plenty of places have implemented carbon taxes without those, and you just don't hear about those examples. I'm happy to share some of the Latin American and other studies where you don't necessarily see these wide-scale protests. And on the on the fuel issue and the EV issue that you raised and earlier, I think it's important to recognize a couple of things. One, you know, General Motors has said they're not going to produce internal combustion engine cars in 15 years. California has banned the sale of internal combustion engine cars in 15 years, in 2035. The transition is happening. We see the discussion at the national level, right? So it's it's really vital to recognize that gas prices are something that's going to be a big transition around as we see this EV infrastructure. We need investments in that infrastructure that will create jobs, but this is happening, right? And and the CCIA will help accelerate that. Thanks.
Yeah, I'll speak to that. The yellow vest movement politically was a disaster precisely because it did not take any account of the impact of the cost increases on the living standards of working people and families. And that's as I'm reading the CCIA, that's simply not the case for the CCIA. I'm looking at right now, Article 43 creates a low-income and small-business energy rebate. So if you have a well-designed rebate program, as should have been the case, it should have been obviously the case in France. You wouldn't have had the yellow vest movement. So it seems to me that the, you know, the CCIA is already well along in addressing exactly the problem created by the yellow vest movement. So you have rebates, you generate revenue, you have rebates, number one. In addition, yes, we're going to subsidize the purchase of EVs. We're going to subsidize public transportation and we're going to subsidize the construction of the infrastructure. That's the whole point. None of that was included in the in the proposal by Macron in France. And that therefore people said, sure, you know, we we understand there's a climate crisis, but you're creating a household income crisis right now and that we can't afford what you are telling us we're going to have to pay. So as well as as long as you have a well-designed redistributive egalitarian framework as the CCIA does, you don't face the kind of problem that existed in France.
Thank you. Fred, you want to add to that or?
Yeah, yeah, I would just say, as a political scientist, I think that both Dr. Pollan and and Dr. Strong have addressed some of the issues. I think we are dealing with the case in France where, you know, a unique set of circumstances elected somebody who was very new to the political realm in France was was really a neophyte. And with the political parties very weakened at that time, except unfortunately, the extreme right, what that left him with was a situation where he was imposing a policy that really had not generated or developed the community support. And I think that's the step that we all have to be cognizant of. You know, I live in very and a number of us do live in very conservative upstate New York where the idea of the climate crisis sparks all sort of negative reactions. So that the education, the conversation that has to be had becomes very important as to what this what the CCIA can do for these communities. I think that's imperative.
Yeah, but I also think that we all need to ask ourselves if enough is being done where this message is in the broader population as opposed to those as opposed to those who follow the policy, advocate for the policy. And I think it's a good question as to whether this has seeped in, you know, it took ten years to get people to think congestion pricing is a good idea with all types of stakeholders working together. So I certainly think there's there's work to be done there. And by the way, I really want to macaroon right now. I would like to ask co-chair Kevin Parker to to take over, to ask some questions, please.
Yes, thank you very much, Chairman Kaminsky. First of all, let me just thank everybody again for their participation. I think that, you know, the whole day has been phenomenal. I think this conversation in particular is somewhat different because we just, we don't necessarily have this many experts in front of us to to give this level of intense conversation. Let me turn my light on so that people can actually see, see who I am. So one, I just want to make the point that Michael, that I want to split the baby with Michael Mensah. He teaches at Brooklyn College, which is in my district. So Rachel, you know, that's fifty percent you, fifty percent me. I'm just saying, I want to, you know, I want to get credit. As you all have probably heard, success has a thousand fathers and failure is an orphan. And so take it, take it in that in that in that vein. I wanted to kind of lean on on your expertise about the the economics of this long term, right? And and kind of hear from the whole panel, your thoughts about the impacts of this led of the CCIA legislation on particularly EJ communities, communities of color, low and moderate income communities specifically.
Well, thank you, Senator Parker, and thanks for all your support for Brooklyn College and for Cutie. I mean, I would say, when it comes to, and I want to come back to this idea of of education and outreach and and building a community of support here. That this kind of crisis connects with communities in different ways, as we've heard throughout the day, right? So some people see it as jobs, some people see it as public health, some people see it as 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 racial inequity. And being able to utilize public, other public institutions like the university systems of SUNY and Cutie, who have those demographics on the campuses, right? These are the communities that live on are are part of the campuses. Helps you be able to tailor that messaging and also do direct assessments to the with those communities about what their needs are and what what they respond to. So when you're building out an economic development package, that's hugely important, right, to have that level of inclusion. And to recognize that the car issue is a, you know, the car issue is a great example, right? The car is a public health issue. We know from the studies with COVID that if you're in a neighborhood that has high low, high levels of ground level ozone or a lot of particulate, you're more likely to be seriously ill from COVID. So we have to reduce car trips for public health reasons, not just for climate reasons, right? And there are communities who will tell you that, and that means green infrastructure on the street. And so we think about, you know, the the co-benefits from green infrastructure on the street with stormwater, with particulate, getting particulate out of the air, with training people in jobs as a ways of learning science. We're doing this at Brooklyn College along Bedford Avenue with the with across the Midwood High School with PS three fifteen.
Yes, my alma mater and also in my district, but go ahead.
Exactly. That's why I'm I'm gesturing towards you. Sorry. So that's an example where we're trying to build curriculum which ties to the learning process as well as to workforce development, to put these kinds of programs on the map for kids. And then when you go into the job situation, you're aware of it. It's familiar to you. It resonates with your community. And we had New York City right past this, the the climate laws two years ago for green roofs. Who's going to do that? I mean, there's a lot of roofs. There's a lot of square footage on all these roofs. Who's going to put the solar on? Who's going to install the solar array? Who's going to do the stormwater? So there's jobs for sure here. And being able to connect organically to the different communities about what's of interest to them is something that the public, the public partners are are well equipped to do.
Yep, Senator Parker, and you do also, you're close by the downstate. So you're you're almost SUNY involved too. Yeah, I I think that that Michael has hit on a number of important points. And in the case of SUNY, of course, being with sixty-four campuses across the state, predominantly upstate Long Island areas. We proposed, UUP did about five years ago, that SUNY needed to commit back then to the development of degree programs for students coming in so that the jobs that were created, and this was back then, jobs that were created were good paying jobs. There's a real issue that needs to be addressed in terms of the green transformation, and more discussion around it is happening. But then I think SUNY as an institution, being in so many small upstate rural communities, can do things like create microgrids that are driven by community solar projects. That's a way, again, as Mike was saying, of getting the community to buy into this. And remember, we are talking about in areas of upstate, in the smaller cities of upstate compared to New York City, where you have communities of color, very poverty stricken communities that need affordable energy and good paying jobs. This transformation can do that. And I believe very strongly that SUNY as an institution must take a lead in doing this. It's got the community presence all across the state. It's the institution that can help drive it.
Thank you. Thank you, Fred. I need to go to the next senator, and I think that's Senator Rachel May.
Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you. This is such a great conversation, and I don't quite know which which direction to take it in. But just very specifically, Fred, do you feel like we are training the trainers? If it if SUNY is going to be the place where we're going to be teaching people how to how to be part of this new economy, are are we also developing the level above of people who will actually do that teaching?
Yes, I think it's both. I think it's training the trainers, but then also I think the need is for certificate programs. Any kind of program in conjunction, I know that in our Empire State College in New York City, the Labor College there works closely with the IBW, Local Three, to provide students with a degree program while they are doing their their training as as electricians. I think something like that can also be done at SUNY campuses upstate to provide, again, the training that's necessary. I I don't want SUNY's institutions to be focused only on, say, a baccalaureate degree or research as important as that are, especially you represent, you know, ESF, which I think is a remarkable institution to research climate change and remediation thereof. But I think that SUNY also has to focus on the training that needs to take place to provide the skills to do the actual work that's necessary. And then there is the reality that if you have campuses across upstate that have big solar projects and have a microgrid that serves the community, there's going to be buy-in to this transformation. It will be seen as a day in and day out part of their lives. So I think it is a combination of investment in infrastructure plus the the job training and the training of the trainers. Absolutely.
Great, thanks. And then going back to the conversation about how you get public buy-in about this. I I've been out of the sustainability field for a few years now, but I've been trying to keep my war in a little bit. And I, one thing that I wonder is the extent to which we are improving our understanding of what the public subsidies already are for the for the fossil fuel economy that we have had. So we heard folks from the business community talking about this as a tax. But I feel like at the very least, we need to be countering with con with real information about the tax that we're already paying the and the degree to which we are subsidizing industry already through public health and and the other the other factors that tend to go uncounted. So I'm just wondering, Aaron, or if anybody's got, do we have better information about that that we can put out there really clearly?
Sure, I can start with that, and I'm sure others will will jump in. And thanks for the question, Senator May. And one thing I want to underscore here about the sort of how ready are people for this transition is there's been a lot of groundwork that's been being laid out in communities that have been starting to to address climate change and starting to prepare for it through state-run programs. And and part of that is that the impacts of climate change and the economic harm that climate change is causing is already being experienced in 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 some of our communities. Then, you know, you go to public meetings and talks and flooding is just a huge issue. And extreme rainfall and precipitation are just huge, huge issues. And those are real costs, right? We talk about the social cost of carbon as like we can figure out what our discount rate is and how to set it. And, you know, the Obama administration had one, which was a little bit south of fifty dollars a ton and and, you know, President Biden's administration has just reinstated it. Let's let's remember that the the social cost of carbon at the federal level, roughly around fifty dollars a ton, is intended to to represent what the actual real impacts of every ton of emissions are that are being borne by our our communities. And the other thing is that that estimate is far too low. A lot of the academic work on the social cost of carbon suggests that the real value is in in the hundreds, if not higher, of dollars a ton. So every ton that's going up, right, those those costs just aren't internalized into the the price that we're seeing. So by adding a fee of fifty-five dollars a ton, yes, it's revenue generating in this case because of the need for that revenue. But I also want to talk about how it reflects the actual damages and harm of using fossil fuel based in infrastructure. And that that's a price borne on our communities. That's, you know, my community in Kirkland here has run out of money several of the past years to clean up from storm damage. They don't have enough money to clean up from storm damage. That's an impact of climate change right there, being borne by our community, right? Being borne by the taxpayers of our community, and we're paying for it. We're paying higher bills here, 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 because we need to deal with this. We have flooding going on here, 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 right? There's concerns in the agriculture industry because of the the impacts of increased heat and because of the freeze thaw whiplash winters that we're getting in terms of apple crops, right? So those are all part of the climate conversation. And I think sometimes when we kind of myopically focus on are people ready for electric vehicles and and infrastructure, we're we're missing some of that other parts of the the conversation here. And it is a real change. Like, it's a big change to do this transition. We're not sure that everyone's ready. But the 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 best numbers that we can get in terms of the economic costs and the impacts you know, are really hard to pin down. We can do it county by county in terms of what those impacts are now and into the future. But it's real money and huge amounts of money that are being spent. And happy to share what the analyses I've done locally here with members of the committee, if those are are helpful.
Thank you.
I'll just jump in briefly. You know, I I agree with what Professor Strong just said fully. And I would just also emphasize the disproportionate impacts on low income communities and communities of color. And in fact, some colleagues at at my institute, Political Economy Research Institute, just put out an excellent study called Green for All, which does quantify those disproportionate impacts. And the centrality, therefore, of designing climate mitigation programs that would address these impacts in terms of public health, environmental justice impacts within communities. And the, again, a really favorable feature of the CCIA is that it actually does do those things. And what my colleagues have shown is that if you target a climate emission reduction program, let's say to get to fifty percent emission reduction in a decade, it matters how you design it such that the impact will be disproportionate on different kinds of communities. So we want to design a program that will address the existing public health costs, major costs borne by the people least able to bear these costs. And you have with the CCIA a measure that addresses that. And what my colleagues have shown, the study is called Green for All, it was just posted like a few weeks ago, is that actually designing it in order to address those environmental justice questions does not add significantly to costs. It's simply a matter of good design versus bad design. And this CCIA, at least in its current form, at least in in its outline and framework, is a good design in terms of addressing these and therefore lowering the costs that are experienced by the least advantaged communities.
Yeah, I guess I wonder, is the cost higher or is the resilience lower? Or is it both? I mean, it seems like agricultural business, you could have a very large agricultural business that would take huge costs because of climate change, but they have resilience to deal with that as opposed to a small farmer or a, you know, someone living in a community where asthma rates are high. I I just, maybe it's all academic, but.
It's academic. Being an academic, I'd take that as a positive. But these are, these are really critical questions, and there are important studies that address them. Professor Strong just was referring to some of them. Some of my colleagues and myself have have done various studies. And I think, you know, the results are pretty pretty robust. The academic results are robust, that you can design a climate program to hit the emission reduction targets that will be good for jobs, that will lower energy costs, that the the impact of the of the increase in the fossil fuel costs can be met by rebates exactly as you've designed it in Article forty-three in CCIA. And that you also pay attention to the community impacts that address the 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 low income communities that are suffering the most, as you just said, Senator May, from from the pollution. I would also add one other thing that we haven't discussed yet, which is the impact on people in communities that are dependent on the fossil fuel industry. And the study I did in two thousand seventeen goes over that in great detail. So I'll just refer you to that.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thanks, Senator May. Senator Kavanaugh?
I thank you all for, you know, all of your input and wisdom here. And and just for Senator Kaminsky's, I do have an undergraduate degree in politics. And so I think I qualify as a, you know, political scientist. But just the, I want to focus a little more on this question of costs that are imposed by by a bill like this and the sort of disparate impact on it. We've talked a lot about it at the community level. There are obviously certain communities that bear the, you know, the the cost of being near facilities that are affecting air quality. And I represent Lower Manhattan, which certainly, and we're certainly very aware of the effect of major storms, especially Sandy, obviously, but really, you know, that that's across the state. And as the housing chair, I note that this year's budget contained a hundred and thirty million dollars of storm recovery funds, which I believe are almost entirely still helping to undo damage from, you know, the storm from from the storms that passed through our state now in nearly ten years ago. So we're, there's a lot of, a lot of community level effects. But it strikes me that one of the challenges here is that the individual, that there's a, there's a sort of disconnect between the mechanism, the availability of mechanisms to to alter our own behavior and avoid costs and the you know, the and the benefit. So so if you're if you're somebody who's receiving one of these new jobs that's been funded by this kind of investment, or you're somebody who can go purchase an electric vehicle and, you know, park it in your garage and charge it with your charging station and, you know, get all the subsidies that are available for that kind of activity, you might view this overall as a as a net benefit for you personally and for your for your household. But, you know, if you're if you're a renter who is paying your own heat, which is something I, as I became a renter upstate, I wasn't really, we didn't really do that a lot in New York City, but it seems pretty common in places like Albany. So you're not, you're not responsible for the insulation of your home. You're not responsible for the efficiency of the heating system. You are responsible for the heating bill. Or if you are a, you know, a rent, you're a homeowner without a garage or a renter who has to park your car on the street somewhere near your house, you're not really, you know, your ability to find an efficient way to to charge that vehicle is going to depend a lot on the public infrastructure that we're creating. And I'm just very conscious, I mean, the, I, you know, I came out in favor of congestion pricing in two thousand and five when I was a candidate for a city office. It took us till two thousand and nineteen to pass that. We have yet to implement it because of, you know, the some reluctance on the part of the prior White House to approve certain things they needed to do. But we still have major opposition on this grounds that people say, okay, it's very good that that I like, people can recognize that there's an overall net benefit and still think it's not benefiting me, you're just imposing a cost on me. So are there, I mean, are there good examples of people tailoring jurisdictions, tailoring approaches like this to address the kind of individual household and and energy consumer readiness to kind of take up the the sort of positive effect? to kind of take up the, the sort of positive activities that will, will be incentivizing and funding here? Or just more generally, how do we, how do we address that? The kind of, the sort of individual kind of inequities in a system like this?
Well, okay, I'll start. Anybody, I'll briefly, I'll just reiterate one thing. As I said, I'm reading the CCIA, the draft of January 11. You know, at least in principle, you've already got the basics sitting there. So in terms of the increased costs that people will bear through consuming fossil fuels, they're going to be made whole. So at least that's what it says, page six, Article 43. Now, of course, there's, you know, you have to design things correctly in order to that not just be something on paper. But the principle is there. So while we are subsidizing, we don't subsidize fossil fuel consumption per se. You're raising, yes, as properly, you're raising the cost of fossil fuel consumption. But you're giving people money back, which they should be able to then use for other things. So, okay, let's say they don't have a garage. But now we're going to have funds in order to build out the charging station infrastructure over time. And so we will transition into electric vehicles that will also, by the way, provide, you know, the energy costs of running the electric vehicle are going to be lower. And yeah, maybe everyone isn't going to feel it initially, but because you have your subsidies built in, people are not going to feel the harm. In terms of that, it's a great question with respect to how you divide the benefits for energy efficiency among renters and owners of structures. You know, I don't know that the CC, I don't know if it's that, that issue has been properly addressed yet. But there are ways, there are, there are proposals that through which the investments that are going to be subsidized in energy efficiency for real estate owners then have to be passed on, at least to some significant degree, to renters as well. And since you, you know, you have these similar kinds of measures with respect to rent control in the city, this could be something that could be incorporated. So I think, you know, it was great when we originally addressed the failure of the, of the carbon tax in France because it was completely ignoring all the issues that are exactly embedded in the CCIA right now that need to be, you know, the specifics need to be filled out.
If I could just add to that, I, I think it's a fantastic question, Senator Kavanaugh. And it's, it really hits at some of the core issues. My short answer is you need to ensure that the bill works to make people whole and creates funds to do the heavy kinds of investment that we need to create the jobs and do the infrastructure. And previous experiences, as we've already talked about with France and elsewhere, have failed on that balancing act, right? And, and those are both critical. And those need to focus on the most disadvantaged communities. So that's what we get in the CCIA. We have experience from other countries of electrification, of getting closer and closer to 100% zero carbon on the electricity sector. But we don't have a full scale decarbonized case study to look at, right? To look at what the transition for buildings and the transition in transportation fully looks like, yet. So I think the answer is that this bill is, is learning from the lessons in the past as closely as it can to try to hit that sweet spot. In the end, you know, as people often say, everyone just wants a hot shower and a cold beer. And they, they don't care where it comes from. And I want that in a way that doesn't kill people, right? And ruin their properties and their crops. So getting that transition, I want, we need to emphasize that this is a transition. But it doesn't then lead to something where everyone just is paying hugely high prices for the fossil fuels that they want to cling to. There's that narrative that's out there. But it is a transition where people still have energy services. They still have transportation. They still have lighting. They still have warm houses, right? They still have all these things. And that's going to require a lot of investment, but also create a lot of job opportunities. And we need to, you know, this is, this is the, why I support the CCIA is that it's paying attention to all of those, those elements. It's a great question.
Yeah, and so I just, I mean, to the extent anybody is aware of, I mean, I guess I'm, you know, as somebody who's broadly supportive of this kind, you know, this approach that we're embarking on here, I'm just trying to, to the extent that anybody's aware of, like, mechanisms. And I think it is especially, I think the electricity sector, because it's a system, you know, you can kind of, you can figure out who's using it, what they're using for, what, how it's being priced, how it's being produced. And we can, we can kind of shift that system in a different direction. I think it's harder with, it's harder with vehicles. It's harder with fuel oil purchases. And so just trying to figure out that, I mean, you know, in our state budget, this state budget we just passed includes $950 million in heap subsidies and home energy assistance program subsidies. That's a big increase because some of it is to offset costs people weren't able to cover during COVID. But it's, we are still at this point where we're both saying, don't consume lots of fuel to heat your homes. And if you consume lots of fuel for, to heat your homes, we'll pay for it. And so it's just, I think we do need to continue to think, we're going to need to continue, we're going to need to benefit, continue to benefit from, from advice and expertise in those areas. I think I will just, in the interest of time, and again, with great appreciation of all the work you've all done and your input today, I think I'll end there. But thank you.
I want to thank this really wonderful panel and all the senators for their participation with respect to this panel. We have two more panels left. So I'd like to thank the professors and usher in panel seven, please. For panel seven.
Thank you.
For panel seven, we have Eric Kosky from the Rochester New York March for Science, Leslie Kagan from the People's Climate Movement, and Bravon Ranga from Nobody Leaves Mid Hudson. Want to start with the testimony of Eric Kosky and ask you to begin your three minutes. Do we have Mr. Kosky here? I don't think we have Mr. Kosky here, at least not for the moment. So why don't we start with Leslie Kagan? Your three minutes begins now, please. Thank you.
Hi, can you hear me? Great, hi, thank you. Thank you and good afternoon. I'm Leslie Kagan. I'm representing the People's Climate Movement, New York. And we too are part of New York Renew. I'm sorry, I can't hear you. Try this again. Can you hear me? Is that better? Thank you. Anyway, I'm Leslie Kagan. I want to thank you again for this actually extremely interesting set of panels that you all have put together. I'm representing People's Climate Movement, New York, and we too are part of New York Renew. I'm not going to repeat what others have already said. But I do want to again remind you, and hopefully you in turn will remind your colleagues in the, in the State Senate of the, about the urgency of the moment and why enacting this legislation is so very needed. As you already know, there is a global climate crisis. It's not just climate change. There is a crisis at hand, and it gets worse each passing day. The major issues before us are how we move off of fossil fuels, how we build a sustainable energy economy based on renewable energy sources, and how we work together to ensure a truly just transition, a transition grounded in racial and economic justice. This is what the CCIA does. Many other New Yorkers would have liked to have been with us at this hearing. But as we know, that's not possible in this day and age at this moment, and we understand that. At the same time, we want to give you a, just a quick overview, a quick look and a sampling of who some of those people are. Bear with me for one second. And I want to start this little video to show you what I'm talking about.
Mr. Kagan?
The point is that we are a statewide movement. We are committed to working with you all and other members of the Senate and Assembly to make sure the CCIA passes in this session. Thank you.
Thanks so much for your advocacy and for that nice video. Mr. Ranga and then Mr. Kosky.
Hey, thanks so much, Senator Kaminsky. And thanks so much, everyone on this panel. I know it's been a long day of testifying and really appreciate your patience in hearing us out. While I'm not an expert on environmental legislation or the science behind the current climate crisis, what I can testify to is the effect of the current crisis on our organization, its members and our communities, and the effects the CCIA will have on the communities that we serve. My name is Bravon Ranga. I'm the political coordinator for Nobody Leaves Mid Hudson. We're a grassroots, member-led organization in the Hudson Valley, which is fighting for a community, a state and a country that works for all of us and not just the greedy few. We have members across the Hudson Valley in cities like Poughkeepsie, Beacon, Newburgh, Kingston and Middletown. We're also an affiliate of the Working Families Party. We work on multi-issue policy campaigns at the state and local level, as well as electoral work. The CCIA is one of our top legislative priorities this session because it works to address two impending crises in the Hudson Valley. The first of these crises is a lack of economic opportunity for middle and working class families. We've seen income inequality skyrocket this past year due to the pandemic, during which the wealthy have done very well and ordinary families have been devastated. Developers and corporations continue to find a lot of profits in the Hudson Valley, displacing many of the folks who have been here for decades by rising prices without providing the jobs that our communities need. And that's why the CCIA is so important. First and foremost, it is a jobs program targeting the communities in the state that need it the most. The CCIA is planned for a just transition to a renewable economy. As you've already heard, will create over 150,000 jobs in the next 10 years. The communities most impacted by the climate crisis, like the Hudson Valley and folks who have been excluded from good paying jobs will be the first in line for the jobs created by this bill. The people closest to the problems are the ones who best understand the solutions. And the CCIA would make available billions of dollars available to the communities of the Hudson Valley, which are on the front line of the climate crisis. What these communities need is unprecedented levels of investment in a long term and just an equitable recovery. We don't need this investment a year from now or next session. What I want to stress is the urgency of this moment. We need this investment right now. Another point is that the critic, it's critical that these jobs are created and they respect strong labor standards and the right to unionize. Strong unions lead to good paying jobs and the rights for workers. And the CCIA was written alongside labor unions, which is really important, and enshrines labor protections and standards within the bill. For those workers that currently work in the fossil fuel industry, which is around 13,000 across the state, the Worker Community Assurance Fund will provide guaranteed economic support to them and retrain them for other renewable jobs. And finally, the CCIA will further assist working families by subsidizing utility bills to ensure that they're not paying exorbitant prices to get access to utilities. The second crisis that this bill addresses is the existential crisis of climate change. And I don't need to speak to that anymore. I know my time has come to an end. But this is an existential crisis and the urgency of the moment cannot be overstated. It's time to pass this legislation. New York State's already a leader across the country in climate change. And passing this legislation will further cement us and create a nationwide movement towards a renewable future. Thanks so much for your time. I really appreciate the opportunity to speak to you all today.
Thank you for your advocacy. Now onto Eric Kosky, please.
Hello, I'm Eric Kosky. I'm a volunteer with Rochester, New York March for Science. Remember March for Science? With Climate Solutions Accelerator of the Genesee Finger Lakes Region and with New York Renew. My testimony is going to be a little bit of a change of pace. I'm going to speak about a wonky bit of the CCIA, which I do strongly support. I'm going to talk about the carbon pollution fee and especially the way it's adjusted over time. This is the component of the bill that provides the bulk of the funding for its programs. It applies the polluter pays principle, the principle long established in environmental law, that those who produce pollution should bear the costs of managing it to prevent damage to human health or the environment. It applies a fee to fossil fuels and fossil fuel derived energy produced or used within the state based on the amount of greenhouse gas emissions generated in producing and using the fuel or energy. The fee is collected from the vendors, importers and in-state producers of fossil fuels and fossil fuel derived energy. It starts at a value of $55 per short ton, 2,000 pounds of carbon dioxide equivalent emissions in 2022 thereafter increasing each year. Over the years from 2023 to 2051, the rate by which the fee increases is determined by an adjustment mechanism carefully designed to ensure that the state meets its emission reduction targets specified by the CLCPA. The design of the adjustment mechanism reflects the understanding that the world has a limited carbon budget, threshold amount of cumulative greenhouse gas emissions that must not be exceeded in order to ensure that the global temperatures increase by no more than two degrees Celsius and preferably by no more than one and a half. The world has a carbon budget. New York has a carbon budget. And my written testimony provides some visuals that hopefully illustrate how the bill accomplishes this and in particular, the, the adjustment mechanism. It's spelled out in some unavoidably dense legal language in Article 42. But I provide a concise summary. In simple terms, the amount of the carbon fees increased each year by a greater amount, seven or 10%, if the state is falling behind its emissions reduction target schedule, by a smaller amount, 2%, if emissions reductions are significantly ahead of schedule, or by the non amount, 5%, if emissions reductions are on schedule. If the state isn't meeting its emissions reduction targets, it seems only reasonable that the fee should increase more rapidly, placing renewable energy at a further competitive advantage and increasing the revenue available to fund energy efficiency and renewable energy programs. It's spelled out in some unavoidably dense legal language in Article 42, but I provide a concise summary. In simple terms, the the amount of the carbon fees increased each year by a greater amount, 7 or 10%, if the state is falling behind its emissions reduction target schedule, by a smaller amount, 2%, if emissions reductions are significantly ahead of schedule, or by the non amount, 5% if emissions reductions are on schedule. If the state isn't meeting its emissions reduction targets, it seems only reasonable that the fee should increase more rapidly, placing renewable energy at a further competitive advantage and increasing the revenue available to fund energy efficiency and renewable energy programs. So again, I'm going to have to direct your attention to the written testimony, which I'll be providing to anyone who's interested. This mechanism adds appreciable complexity to the CCIA, but it yields significant benefits as well. By fine tuning the carbon feed based on feedback from past performance, it addresses an often cited liability of carbon pricing mechanisms that they fail to ensure emissions reductions on a predictable schedule.
Mr. Kosky, Mr. Kosky, can you please wrap up? Thank you.
Okay, certainly. The CCIA is the climate legislation New York needs at this pivotal moment to fulfill the promise of the CLCPA and pave the way for a green recovery in which all New Yorkers can share. Please give it your energetic support. I want to thank Senator Kaminsky, Senator Parker for convening what has been a very illuminating discussion and all the senators present for excellent questions reflecting a lot of insight.
Thank you, Mr. Kosky. Thanks for your advocacy and thank you to the whole panel. We're now going to call our final panel of the day, Panel Number Eight. And I would like to welcome Anna Cathawala from New York Renews, Merton Simpson from the Albany County Legislature and Peter Savio from the Citizens Climate Lobby. And I'm going to ask legislator Simpson to begin testimony whenever you're able to get your audio and video up. There you are. Great to see you. And your three minutes can begin whenever you want to start.
Okay, am I hitting testimony?
Yep, you got it right now. You have three minutes, sir.
Okay, as the Albany County Legislature for District Two, representing Arbor Hill, Sheridan Hollow, Washington Park and West Hill, I would just like to thank Senators Kaminsky and Parker for this opportunity to testify. On reading the Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act, I was pleased to see that under the definition of renewable energy systems, geothermal brown source heat was included. I had the opportunity to testify at the January 27, 2021 Environmental Conservation Budget Hearing on Executive Budget Appropriations for 2021-2022. I watched the entire hearing from beginning to end at approximately 9:00 PM. And I believe I was the only person to raise the need for geothermal energy, although there was a supportive follow-up comment. I think this is a reflection of how little understanding there is on the viability of geothermal energy. As a county legislator, the need to address the crisis of climate change has become one of my main priorities. It was only a few months ago, around October 8th, when over upwards of 130,000 residents of the capital region lost powers, lost power for up to seven days. The recent major snow event in Texas and the record-breaking fires in California makes it clear that the climate challenge is real and getting more serious every day. In 2017, I was made aware that there was a project proposed by the New York Power Authority to install frac natural gas turbines at facilities owned and operated by the Office of General Services at 79 Sheridan Avenue. The frac natural gas was piped in from Pennsylvania. And I live at 295 Sheridan Avenue, less than seven blocks away from the 79 Sheridan Avenue Power Plant. Since 1911, this plant has been the source of environmental racism for residents of Sheridan Hollow, Arbor Hill and communities nearby. Over the years, the plant has burned coal, oil, trash and frac natural gas. I recently had the opportunity on March 27th to hear a presentation from the lead engineer from NYSERDA for the the offshore wind project in the south end of Albany, near the port of Albany. And there was a follow-up on April 9th with the Legislative Black Caucus of the Albany County Legislature, legislature, in which there was a discussion about how the disadvantaged communities in Albany could be made part of the community benefits and other benefits that have come down from the CCIA and the CLCPA. The offshore wind project is a clear example of how communities that are distressed need to be assisted. It's an $8 billion-plus project in the south end of Albany. And just like the Empire State Plaza Initiative on Sheridan Hollow, which the community residents of Sheridan Hollow and Arbor Hill have suffered pollution, but have not received any of the benefits from the fueling of the 98-acre Empire State Plaza. Also, the newly proposed offshore wind project is going to primarily fuel downstate entities. And although there's discussion about how community benefits can aid the local community, we are not necessarily going to receive any of the direct benefits from this major, major project. I think it's one of the most significant energy projects in the history of the country. And and so the CCIA comes in in terms of how, in fact, community benefits are going to be equitably distributed, particularly in general in the upstate region versus downstate, but even more specifically for the disadvantaged communities in Albany. Now, again, the example of the offshore wind project is significant because it is housed in one of the most disadvantaged communities in Albany, proximate to the port of Albany. And so the real question of not being locked out in musical chairs when the music stops, considering that this is a major statewide initiative, the protocols on how a selection process is going to be established in order to fairly input people from disadvantaged communities in upstate New York is something that really needs to be significantly fleshed out. You know, in in the the Black Caucus of the Albany County Legislature has had a bad experience with project labor agreements. The Albany County Nursing Home, we spent a great deal of time working out contingencies to benefit the disadvantaged communities, and we basically got nothing out of it. The Capital Center that was recently constructed, the same problem. The Livingston Avenue School Project that was converted from a major school into a senior home was put together by a firm from Connecticut. So I think the real challenge is how in the upstate area we make sure that we get our equitable share of the pie, understanding that there are a large number of people who deserve to be
recipients of the benefits from the CCIA. But the actual mechanisms are going to be kind of in a triage situation. And so legislator Simpson, if you could just wrap up, please.
Yes, and so my my cry is for very specific protocols into how the county legislature and neighborhood associations can actually access the process. Thank you.
And thanks for your service and your testimony. We're now going to go to a student organizer, Anna Cathawala. Thanks so much for being here.
Good afternoon and thank you for the opportunity to testify and support the CCIA today. My name is Anna Cathawala and I am a student organizer for Our Climate and New York Renews. This Climate and Community Investment Act, the CCIA, is not just a bill. It represents my future, the opportunities my generation will have and the lives we'll be able to live. Without it, all of that looks bleak. Passing the CCIA is intrinsic in preserving my future and the future of my generation. The world I will inherit as an adult will be plagued by the consequences of climate change. Science has clearly told us that action is not only needed, but is crucial and that action cannot come in 10 years or 20 years, but right now. We have a villain and we know who to blame. Corporate polluters have been taking advantage of tax breaks and cuts and abuse their outrageous wealth to continue dumping toxins into minority communities and degrading our environment. For years, we have been paying for their actions through our healthcare bills and environmental cleanup costs. It is time for the tables to turn. I was born and raised in Manhattan, an island very close to sea level. With current greenhouse gas emissions and the lack of responsibility corporate polluters are taking for them, Manhattan and the world I know will be a casualty of sea level rise. This is hard to imagine, but it's the future we face. The sea level on New York's coastline is a foot higher than it was in 1900 and parts of Manhattan and the greater New York City area are at severe flood risk. The increase in bigger, more frequent and stronger storms and flooding will lead to more of the city becoming at risk of going underwater, leading to billions of dollars of damage and healthcare costs. Superstorm Sandy is a prime example of how intense storms and flooding can affect our public transportation and lead to billions in damage. Without the CCIA, the burden of these costs will fall on the people rather than the corporate polluters who are primarily to blame. A portion of the $15 billion raised from corporate polluters in the CCIA will go towards adaptation infrastructure to help communities build resilience and prepare for the effects of climate change. Regardless of how much we decrease our emissions by now, we have already committed ourselves to certain impacts and need to be adequately prepared. Enhancing and building up this infrastructure will make an immense impact on how bad the damage will be. As a student, the green infrastructure the CCIA will provide schools across the state is extremely beneficial. The New York City Public School System alone has over 1.1 million students and 1,800 buildings, meaning clean energy and infrastructure used for these schools has a real impact. The money from the CCIA will go towards zero-emission school buses, creating higher-quality jobs for school bus drivers and improving school energy efficiency. It will transition schools towards renewable energy and will give priority to schools and disadvantaged communities. Electric buses will also help to reduce the health impacts caused by pollution and climate change, including reducing local asthma rates. Education is vital for young people and students across the city and state, no matter their background, can go to school in a building that runs on renewable energy with green infrastructure and is staffed by people with high-quality jobs. Their overall experience will be improved. The CCIA is our chance to pave the path forward and set an example for both the state and the nation. We have a chance to give back to those who have suffered for years because of the actions of corporate polluters, and we cannot throw that chance away. I strongly urge every member of the Senate and Assembly to co-sign through this bill and vote yes for it when the time comes. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Anna. Thanks for your concern for our plan and for your advocacy. It's very impressive. Really great to have you here today. And our final witness of the day, Peter Savio.
Thank you, Senator. Good afternoon. My name is Peter Savio. I'm a volunteer with the Citizens Climate Lobby, or CCL. On behalf of the Citizens Climate Lobby in New York, I first want to express appreciation and respect for the work of the whole team and in particular, Senator Kaminsky and Senator Parker, not only for the dedication and effort today in this hearing, but for your longtime thoughtful leadership on climate legislation. Citizens Climate Lobby has over 400 active chapters across the US, including 22 chapters here in New York. We are solutions-oriented and focus and have focused for more than a dozen years on nonpartisan support of an economy-wide price on carbon. As all of us recognize, timely and effective follow-through is crucial to putting our state firmly on a path to meeting the state's climate goals in the CLCPA. The CCIA is an essential element of CLCPA follow-through. We support its scope and ambition and hope to see it strengthened, clarified and passed this session. At the same time, we wish to raise some concerns, some of which were raised earlier by Senator Kavanaugh as well as by Ann Reynolds of Ace New York. So we do have a few concerns and suggested suggestions in terms of possible avenues to address them. One, the CCIA's proposed strong carbon price plus a price on co-pollutants is necessary and appropriate. However, as structured, it will impose significant financial costs to consumers and businesses that will only grow as the fee, in other words, the dollar per ton increases over time. This could possibly risk initial and long-term support for this important initiative. In addition, a single-state carbon price risks a shift in carbon emissions to outside the state. As you've heard earlier, this is also referred to as leakage. This risks not only a net growth in emissions from areas outside the state, but also an increase in economic activity there relative to New York. Finally, the proposed calculation of air pollution pricing is unnecessarily complex, we think, and dependent on annual analysis by D E C. To our first concern, we believe that the majority of CCIA revenues should be directly returned to consumers with priority given to frontline communities and the bottom two quintiles on the economic ladder. We note that there are residential, institutional and business consumers that face either a high energy cost burden, high hurdles to reducing their fossil fuel-related consumption or both. We think this includes not only residences, but businesses, hospitals, laboratories, manufacturers whose equipment, supplies and services are currently existed and invested in the existing infrastructure. Considered together, we think that a deeper share of revenue is going to the widest possible scope of energy consumers is appropriate to maintain momentum and smooth the transition to a net-zero economy. To our second concern, one means to address this is through an economy-wide framework as proposed with a sector-based rollout that includes features that can help to avoid or abate leakage. Two well-thought-out examples of this are the NiSoCarbon pricing proposal and the TCI, the Transportation Climate Initiative. NiSoCarbon Adder applies a price on all carbon-based electric production, whether it's produced in-state or imported from out-of-state. The TCI has been developed with 13 other northeast and mid-Atlantic states with a level of coordination and dollars per ton applied. Both of these approaches would limit leakage or interstate competitive disadvantages to our state. With respect to complexity, we suggest a more straightforward and transparent fee schedule such as that proposed in Senator Parker's Legislation for a Tax on Carbon-Based Fuels, S3336. This provides a more clear and certain price signal, and we believe that's appropriate. Lastly, we believe that the CCIA and its ambitious price on carbon and other emissions offers the state a great opportunity to advance transformative decarbonization. We offer our suggestions with great respect and in the spirit of strengthening its support and impact, we hope that our suggestions will help build on the work and momentum embodied in the CLCPA and the CCIA and put wind in the sails for passage this session. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I think this final panel is exemplary of the great climate advocacy we have in our state from a legislator to a young student to a citizen advocate volunteer. It shows the real momentum we have in our state and the great participation we have that helps us be a national leader. I want to thank everybody for participating today, both the elected officials and the panelists. Want to thank the hard-working staff, Chris Amato and Angela Doherty and Lonnie Threets for helping us organize this, Rob Haberman as well. And Chair Parker, are there any final remarks you'd like to give before we sign off?
Absolutely. First, let me join you in thanking the staff. We certainly couldn't get this done without the hard work of the staff and everybody that you mentioned. Really appreciate all the efforts and making it happen. And certainly all of the panelists that we've had all day. They've been great, you know, you know. People have been great on time, so we're getting done at a time, although it's still a long day. It's going to be far more reasonably than I actually expected us to get. And also, obviously, our colleagues who stuck in most of the day and asked some tough questions. This is a huge bill. It took me forever to actually even introduce it because it took my staff a long time to actually read the bill and understand all the parts of it. And my colleagues, I think, on both sides of the aisle have asked some good penetrating questions. I think that it gives us fodder to start continuing to negotiate this bill. And so I appreciate everybody's time and attention. But I particularly want to thank Senator Todd Kaminsky, who really has provided a lot of leadership on this issue, both in the CLCPA and the CCIA, and, you know, came to me with the idea of doing this public hearing. And we have partnered on this on this day together and just want to thank him for his vigilance and for his great questions that, again, I think, get us to a place of understanding this legislation,